Good evening. So this is the closed session meeting for Rikers City Council for June 6, 2023, starting at 5:31. So public comment, do I have anybody online, Rheta? Nobody's online, nobody's in the audience, so I will close the meeting. Right. Good evening. Please join me in the pledge allegiance. Good evening, everybody, and welcome to our Rikers City Council meeting for June 6, 2023. We now go into regular session, starting at 6:32. There's no reportable action on our close session item, but noted that Councilman Davis recused himself from item 3A. Councilman Keg recused himself from item 3B on the closed session. Okay. And Mr. Ledbetter, is anybody here from Pacific Power for the wildfire planning update?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, we had a cancellation. They will be regrouping. And we anticipate them at the next meeting or the only meeting in July. Pacific Power will reschedule for the wildfire planning update.
Okay, so 5A will be removed at this time. And so then we'll go to 5B, this is going to be Councilman Keg is going to be in a presentation on our homeless and give us some information and update. So you can go right up there. Thank you, Mr. Keg, so.
Short people down here.
Alrighty, let me turn that one off. Yeah. Hold one second while I get their TVs on.
There you go. Alrighty, I'd like to thank you all for coming. Tonight's topic we're talking about on this is the homeless and homelessness. One of the first things I want to talk about is I do have some question cards up here. Anybody take the cards, question cards? Anybody wants one of these? Fill it out, bring it back to me. These aren't necessarily going to answer these questions. I am going to, at the end of this presentation, I am going to answer probably like a half dozen questions from the public, if you guys have any. But I would invite you to fill out a question card and a comment card. So if you know, if you have some comments on what we should be doing as a city for future, please comment on it. If you have an idea of any sort, would love to. If you have just a complaint, go ahead and go ahead and complain. I don't care. It's not one thing we haven't heard before, but we like to hear any new ideas, especially some positive ideas. So I'd like for you to run with that. Go with positive ideas to help us out on this situation. This is, this is something in the future that is going to, you know, all cities are addressing right now. It's not just us, City of Warricka. We're talking across the nation, especially the West Coast. West Coast has been heavily impacted on homelessness. So we invite anybody to have some solutions to the problem. Like I said, a lot of times we already know what the problem is, but we would like for some solutions to be administered so where we can start moving forward in a positive way. So that mine, like I said, those are questions cards up there. Please feel free to, you know, spill those out and I'll collect them at the end of the night. Right now, we're going to go ahead and start off with this presentation. Right now, we're just talking about understanding discussion topics, understanding the core problem. That's where we're going to go into the point in time count. Point in time count will show some of these core problems, not everything. It's just going to address some of those problems that we see on the streets, what we did at the point in time count. And we'll show those numbers. A lot of people will be surprised on some of those numbers on what we're going to do tonight. Next, we're going to have our attorney and Andrew Jared. He's actually going to go over the laws, the couple of main court cases that kind of kind of made this whole thing where we're at today. Boise's Martin versus Boise, Johnson versus Grants Pass. Those are a couple of different ones that have really tied our hands as a city to be able to do what a lot of people want us to do, unfortunately. Next, we're going to go over the and collaborate with partners, social services and those sort of things. So all of our different community partners, we're going to talk about those who's involved in our community and who's been helping out and some of the solutions that we've come with. And so next one is measurable steps that have been done and what we're doing in the future. Huge different things. So next, please. Oh, you got there. So here we have, what I talked about before is a point in time count. Point in time count is required by HUD for us to do as a county. It shows different numbers of what we're dealing with on those things. So we, this last year, we did back in January. And if you look at the data, it's actually incorrect data at the top. There it says 2022 is actually 2023. That was the first thing I caught, unfortunately. We actually had 507 homeless individuals in Siskiyou County. Now that is sheltered and unsheltered. That is both. Unsheltered being the people that you would see in a tent camped out someplace, possibly in a motor vehicle, those sort of things. A trader, whatever, that is unhooked up. Sheltered is, is individuals that could be in a trader that is hooked up to services of some sort. Most of the time, your sheltered individuals are going to be counted by our social workers from behavioral health or somebody like that. Those sheltered individuals are usually paid for by some type of voucher, some type of, you know, sometimes resource center or something like that will pay for an individual to be staying in a motel or something of that sort. So starting off with number one, their age, age brackets. So now if you go through these age brackets, if you're looking through there, you start skimming down through there, right, right off the bat, you see the young, you know, under five, up to 13 to 17. So our youngsters of that sort, you're seeing, there's actually 69 young individuals that were counted this last time on a point in time count. Now, keep in mind on that left-hand side, these, most of these were sheltered individuals. So our, our system is doing a good job. They're getting these kids off the streets. They're getting in some place in a safe environment and making sure that they're not on the streets wandering. So, and what we'll talk about later on in this meeting too, in this presentation is that if we tackle homelessness at a young age, it will prevent them at a later date and an older age from becoming homeless. It's a proven fact. So the younger that we can help correct this problem of homelessness at a young age, the better our problem is solving that problem at a later date is going to be. As you can see, as you, as you scroll on down to there, the number one age bracket for homelessness is 35 through 44. Now that is across the board. That is seven counties of the North State, across the country, actually, is that is the number one age bracket, especially for unsheltered individuals is 35 through 44. So if we can fix this problem at a younger age, hopefully, we won't be seeing that age bracket be such a burden on society or just on themselves, period. We need to tackle this at a young age and prevent it from happening at an older age. So that was a number one age bracket. Now, if you go down and look further, so we had a total of that age bracket was 117 individuals, 35 through 44. The, the seven counties of the North State was 577 in that age bracket. Now you go down here and look at age 65 plus, which is quite alarming. If you look at that, that's actually 36 individuals were 65 and older. So there's, there again, it's one of those things, if we can correct that is at a young age and figure out how to keep them from being on the streets, then it reflects on a later date where we don't have to worry about even the elderly and people getting that age bracket, keep them out of there. Go on to next one, which is gender. So there we go. Next one, gender, male was number one, especially if you look at it on the unsheltered part of that. So unsheltered males is like number one, 149 individuals, male individuals versus female on the unsheltered, 71 on that. Okay, we'll go Scott Race there, white was number one on that. Now you look at that and you see American Indian native, Alaskan native and indigenous. It depends on how you look at yourself. If you're indigenous, American Indian, there's different classifications. But we are working, just so everybody knows, we are working with the Karuk tribe on, on homelessness too. So they are big, a big factor in helping us on our COC, helping us to address the issue of homelessness in the native side of that. Jump on next, or you got it there, health, yes. So health. We got, when you start looking at that, you got physical disability, developmental disability, chronic health condition, living with HIV/AIDS, mental illness, domestic violence, and substance abuse, alcoholism, and last one's just receiving disability benefits. So getting back to that, one, one of the number ones we see across the whole seven counties of the North State is one of the, one of the problems with homelessness is they're facing is mental illness. That is, that is like number one mental illnesses, and that's across the whole seven counties of the North State. That might not necessarily be the number one cause why they are experiencing homelessness, but that is the number one health issue that they're experiencing is mental illness. And this, this is the other thing everybody's got to remember too. This, what we did at the point in time count, this is all voluntarily what they do. So in other words, when we're out there, we're surveying these individuals. This is what they voluntarily give us. So those that we see experiencing mental illness, which is 150 individuals here in Siskiyou County, those were volunteered. They gave us, they, they told us that they are experiencing mental illness. That goes along with, if you go on through substance abuse. We had 86 individuals experiencing substance abuse. There were 734 across the whole COC, the whole seven counties of the North State. So that's it. There again, these are the individuals that voluntarily gave us these numbers. And that's a key thing all through this whole point in time count that I'm going over, everybody's got to realize that this is volunteer. So it's not always what you and I would agree on, but this is what they voluntarily gave us this information. So we are still health. Let's go ahead, jump on to residency. She's got, okay, jumped on to residency then. The time, okay. Residency. So this is another big one that everybody needs to look at because I get questioned this a lot and, and a lot of people in especially Warrick area ask, well, most of these individuals that are living here that are homeless in Warricka or in Siskiyou County, they're not from this area. That is actually not true. If you look at this residency and you look at over 10 years, we actually had 242 individuals here that have been, have resided in Siskiyou County for over 10 years. So that myth that everybody says that they're all transplants from another area that Medford's been shipping them down, Redding's been shipping them up, the Bay Area, there might be some little bit of validity to that. But the majority of the individuals that are homeless in Siskiyou County have resided in Siskiyou County over last 10 years. Or if you look at the numbers there, you get numbers, the next one, six to 10 years, there's actually a total of 73. So you total those up, that's 315. That is over, well over half right there and just in two numbers alone, over half of those individuals reside here in Siskiyou County. Across the COC, in our area for the seven counties of the North State, there were 764, just 764 for over 10 years. So that's this, the numbers that I'm showing you right here are actually the same in Redding, the same in all these other counties too. We're not, we're not exclusive on that. Then the next one she has is the length of time, length, excuse me, length of time homeless in this time. So in other words, when we got, when we interviewed, interviewed these individuals, these individuals were saying, the last category, you see three years or more. So this time that they're, that they're actually homeless, the, there was 114 individuals on that last category that were homeless for three, this time for more than three years. Now, that does not show us the individuals that have chronic homelessness. So in other words, there's a lot of individuals, when you talk to them personally, that have been homeless for 10 years, even more. I mean, we interviewed some individuals that it's pretty, pretty much a lifelong thing of theirs, where they've actually been homeless for their whole life. And that's, these are the things that we need to figure out how to correct. And that's why we're addressing these things. That's why we do the point in time count is to try to figure out how to address these issues, how to fix chronic homelessness, how to move ahead and get them into a safe situation to where now they're not going to be on the streets or in a lot of cases, people think of a nuisance to society. We need to figure out how they don't, how they're not going to drain our resources in society. And this is one of the reasons why we do the point in time count is to address these situations. So next, yep. So the last one there. This is real, this was really an eye opener, really was. Which fire were you impacted by? And if you look at the last three, last three categories right there, 2020 Oregon fires, 2021 fire and 2020 fires. Now, we did, the year before, we had everything like, like you're seeing up there, the campfire, the car fire. Well, after this last year, we finally got to the point, it's like, we can't keep listing all the fires. It's getting to be a little ridiculous on the fires that we've been having. So we just did it in general. So if you add up the 20, now these are, these are individuals that were impacted, not necessarily individuals that were homeless due to fires that were impacted in some shape or form. A lot of these individuals were actually homeless because of the fire though, just so you know. If you add up the last three categories, there's a, here in Siskiyou County, there was 113 individuals that were impacted some shape or form by the fires around this area. That's like I said, if you're out there and you're doing these interviews, you'd know that, I'm sure Paul would attest to this, that we talked to a number of individuals that the Happy Camp Fire that was down there, we got hit pretty heavy with a lot of individuals coming up here in traders, especially that were camped out either legally or illegally down in, down by Happy Camp, and they actually ended up here in Warrick area for a number of time. So these are things that we have to address. Now, if you look at those numbers too, on the left-hand column, like I said, that is sheltered. So a lot of these individuals did, because of that, get some type of aid to get into a motel or some type of sheltered situation to get them off the streets. So that is a positive thing, keeping them from wandering the streets and causing other problems. So they're able to get them off the streets, get them in a safe environment through some type of voucher system. So these are things that we got to address in the future too, to figure out where the huge impact is. I've been doing a lot of research on other areas and that has, that has heavily impacted a lot of other areas too, is the fire situation. Because they lost some of the area to where they can, some of these people, whether they have a house or didn't have a house, some of these people were camped out along, you know, public areas and now it's burned up and they have no place to go. So then they end up in the streets and whatnot. There's actually a, a place down south. I can't remember the name of the street, but it's a couple mile long. I don't, do you recall, there's, there's a certain street down by the Bay Area that's just solid homelessness going on. It's, it's, it's crazy. Miles and miles of traders camped out on this one road and it's due to some type of hardship like this fires or whatnot. So go ahead and next. So this, some of the, a lot of things that we've been doing and basing our time and energy off of has been what the Rogue Retreat's been doing. If anybody has a chance to go check it out, the Rogue Retreat has, has a really good model that they've been doing up there. They address the situation. I know a lot of people go up to Medford and they say, oh my goodness, the homelessness is out of control in Medford area. Well, if, if it wasn't for the Rogue Retreat and some of the other facilities there, homelessness would be out of control up in that area. Rogue Retreat has a good program and it's a stepping program. Basically, they have the urban campsite, they have the pallet shelters, they have the actual shelter, shelter, and then they actually, the final step is the tiny home structures. And in those tiny home structures, they actually, those individuals actually have to pay rent and then they actually move to the next step, which is independence, hopefully to an apartment or something else. So they have these certain stepping procedures that they're doing and we've, we've kind of taken and tried to model some of the stuff that we're doing in same way. We wanted, we want these individuals to go from one to another and hopefully the, the goal is to get them to be productive citizens down the road. And that's our ultimate goal as much as we can. You know, there's, there's only so much we can fix as a city and there's only so much things we can fix as a society, but we do need to do our part and hopefully get these individuals into the success place of independence. So next. So now we're going to go into the law. We're going to have our city attorney explain the, these main cases, Martin versus Boise. And that's the, that's the key case actually started all this. Fight our hands as a city to be able to do what a lot of individuals want. So you know, we have a lot of individuals say, oh, put them in a bus, ship them away. No, it's not. It's kicking, it's kicking the can down the road. But in an extent, we need to address this head on. But this court case, Martin versus Boise, kind of changed everything. And also the Blake versus Grants Pass. So those two court cases, and he's going to explain that. So go ahead.
Well, good evening. Thank you. Yeah, as a council member said, the Martin v. Boise case is a real game changer here, but it goes back to the Eighth Amendment of the US Constitution. And that is
Hold on one second. Can you adjust his volume or you're really low? So I don't think our audience can hear you. I can barely hear you. So hold on one second. Thank you, Rheta.
How about now? Is that better?
Hold on one second. Okay, Andrew, thank you. Go ahead.
Is that better now? Can you hear me better?
Little bit.
All right. I don't know what's going on with that. Was it different before?
No.
Okay. All right. I'll speak a little bit closer to the mic then. As I was saying, the, what it comes down to is on the seizure property, Fourth Amendment, on the the imposing of cruel and unusual punishment, that's under the Eighth Amendment. And so Martin v. Boise analyzed the anti-camping laws that the city of Boise had adopted under the Eighth Amendment, which prohibits excessive bail, imposing excessive fines or the infliction of cruel and unusual punishment. They viewed this as forcing someone to either go to jail or live outside in the cold because the law imposed prevented the use of even the most rudimentary of shelters, a blanket, that that was cruel and unusual punishment. What Boise didn't say, however, Martin v. Boise did not say is that they were, and they, they said this very clearly, the court said that their holding is a narrow one, that they are in no way dictating that the city must provide sufficient shelter for the homeless or allow anyone who wishes to sit or lie or sleep in the streets at any time and when, any place. They held that so long as there is a greater number of homeless individuals in a jurisdiction than the number of available beds in shelters, the jurisdiction cannot prosecute the homeless individuals for involuntarily sitting, lying or sleeping in public. They went on to say that their holding did not cover individuals who do have access to adequate temporary shelter, shelter, either because they have the means to have shelter or that shelter that is free of charge is realistically available to them for free, but they choose not to use it. So these are some important things to keep in mind when crafting solutions towards homelessness is that the, the court cases are not absolute in their sense of, you know, no imposition of regulations. There, there still remains ways to adopt ordinances that carve out areas for enforcement. And so some cities have looked at time, place and manner restrictions, as they're called. And the case law does still allow for there to be certain places or certain times of day, things of that nature, where regulation against sleeping and camping could be imposed. Now, while the grants, Johnson v. Grants Pass and Blake v. Grants Pass did extend the Martin v. Boise case to articulate a little bit better about what is not allowed with anti-bedding ordinances. It didn't go so far as to say they're completely prohibited to all borders within the city. And there have been cases at the district court level in other parts of the Ninth Circuit that have articulated this a little bit better. And so there was a case in the District Court for Hawaii that said the prohibitory ordinance may validly be enforced at particular times or in particular locations. Likewise, there was a case, in that case dealt with an anti-camping at a particular beach park. There was a similar case out of District of Idaho, dealing with the Idaho Capitol complex, but likewise prohibited camping on the Capitol complex grounds. And the district court there in interpreting the Martin v. Boise case said that such an ordinance did not violate the laws because the, it was a limited scope. So there's a lot there to consider with anti-camping. Another issue often is dealt with from a legal perspective is prohibiting the amount of possessions that people experiencing homelessness might have either on them or around them. And with that, there have been a number of cases that deal with that and are better articulating what can and can't be done to address those laws. And so the baseline on that one, the Levan and the Garcia cases out of Los Angeles, where the seizure and summary destruction of unabended, unabanded, but temporarily unattended personal property was to be in violation of the Fourth Amendment. And so there've been a number of cases that have built on those interpretations of the Fourth Amendment. And so when we're dealing with these issues, we really have to keep in mind these very basic constitutional protections and that the courts will uphold the constitution regardless as to, of one's housing status. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. So, you know, when we're looking at these as a city, anything that we do, we have, we have to look at this right off the bat is what we're doing is illegal, first and foremost. We got to, we got to look at that and consider that right off the bat. Right now, Grants Pass, because of that lawsuit, is they brought it back and they're trying to, they repealed it. And, and now they're going to the higher court. They're actually trying to, it's still the, the Ninth Circuit Court they're going to, but they're taking it now to appeals part of it to where now the rest of the judges in this case are going to look at it. And there was, before then, there was three judges that looked at it and two out of the three said ruled in favor of the defendant. So this, as far, as far as the homeless individual. So now they're relooking at this and they're appealing this and hopefully it'll go to all the, the judges and they're going to look at it in another way. So this is a monumental case on the Grants Pass version of this because it's, it could set a precedence for the whole United States on that aspect and the way they're looking at it. And the way they're looking at it and it could change the way we do things just because of that. So it's anyways, getting back to it, it's game real tricky, um, on how we do and how we handle things. Cause if we do things the wrong way here as a city, it will, it could cost the city millions of dollars. So everything we look at, we're taking this in consideration and making sure that we're locked, you know, doing the right thing all the way around for the citizens and for the homeless individuals. So let's go back to measurable steps. So right off the bat, um, I'm going to give you a brief thing of what we started here about six years ago, we started the Siskiyou homelessness coalition. Um, that is now kind of changed into the continuum of care. It's over, it's overseen by the unfortunate government. Um, but it is actually a good thing because now through this continuum of care that we, we have established the Siskiyou homelessness, um, advisory board. We've been able to get certain amount of funding to the state to help address some of these issues. And, um, in regards of that, the COC, our COC, there's just good, um, advisory board, homeless advisory board is made up of a number of different, uh, entities. There is the behavioral health, human services, resource center, Sixtones, Waireka Food Bank, Tillgators, law enforcement, the Karuk tribe, the hospitals, um, county supervisors, um, and list goes on and on. There's actually quite a few and we actually even have one member of the homeless, uh, homeless individual from up on the hill that actually is part of our, our COC, part of our, um, advisory board. So this is made up of a number of different groups and entities to help fix this problem, um, as best as we can. One of the, you know, one of the things we do with the continuum of, of care was this point in time count. That has a lot of structure for some of our funding that comes about. Some of the things we get from that is obviously it says up there, age, gender, years homeless, all this stuff, which that goes back to HUD and from HUD, um, they, they bring together these numbers and that's where, how we can get some of this funding. Next one-
Five minutes, Mr. Cake.
Yes.
Five minutes.
Uh, yeah.
Keep going.
Next one is our Siskiyou County Partners Program. So, right off the bat, and I'm going to bring in, um, our, our, uh, our Mr. Chief, uh, Gilman in this situation, um, give a little bit of background. Let's start off with the homeless liaisons. Officer, um, he, uh, started, we started a program through the county and, um, Mr. Gilman is going to explain what that program is.
I can count on you. Good evening, Chef Gilman.
So we did start a homeless liaison officer position. Um, homeless accounts for well over twenty-five to fifty percent of our calls for service every day. So our homeless liaison person is a liaison, as the word says, instead of just punishing, which we, you know, typically do with a crime, he's more into helping. He's been, he spends time with them to find out what they need, what resources are available for him, trying to get him off the street. It's been very successful. Uh, he's sent several people home. We've got him bus tickets. We've arranged for them to go back home and get off the streets. He's also helped people get into services that need services, um, drug addiction, get people off drug addiction. We spend about three hundred hours a month is what we try, that's our goal. This is voluntary by the officers. They sign up for overtime to work this, to help people. So they do volunteer their time and they do it on their days off. We have one person assigned to it that that's his job. Uh, he only works about twenty hours a week on, it's a part-time thing. So it's been very successful. It's been very good. Um, and it helps us with our calls for service. Cause like I said, there are, out of two thousand calls, four hundred and forty-three just incidents were homeless. That's not counting the arrests. That was just incidents where we went and made a contact with a homeless person to try and help them. That was over, it was four hundred and forty-three calls or something out of twenty-two hundred. I did a search in a row because of limitations of our system. Um, that's not counting cases or arrests because they're saved a different way. So it doesn't show up as incidents. So just contacting someone that's homeless was over twenty-five percent of my time. Three of the homeless individuals accounted for twenty percent of the calls. We all see them on the street. We all see the same people that, you know, you, you get complaints from the public on, I get calls on. They counted for twenty percent of its calls. So that's where we're doing the homeless liaison position. We're working with the county. It's a large group effort. A lot of those from the council, some members over here, some of those before your time, but the councils worked out this, worked, made this happen. And it's been very successful so far.
Thank you, Chief Gilman.
All right. So that, that, that's one of the services that we've been doing as a city also, um, in conjunction with the county. Uh, the other thing was the PLHA allocation, um, for the county services. So in other words, we had, we had a grant that we actually administered to the county and a number of the other cities actually did the same grant, this PLHA grant. And what that grant goes towards is to, for the county to like do a shelter or any of these other things to help out with um, problems with the homelessness. Um, next one, let's see, okay, collaboration with the building and planning of Crossroads. So, Crossroads is the fifty unit complex that's going up, up on Foothill. Those, that, that complex will, twenty-four of those, um, units will help individuals who are, who are experiencing homelessness. Twenty-five of those are people that are on the edge of being homeless. And then one is an in-house manager that's there twenty-four seven all the time to look over that. So it's a really good program. That's actually another stepping program from some of these other things that we're trying to do. So that is like the final step in hopefully to the next step into independence. Um, additional programs, um, grants for the, we talked about the homeless, um, officer. Uh, evaluating grants for code enforcement. We have a number of different grants, grants we're working on for code enforcement. Go into, um, Home Key application. So, um, a lot of people, um, already know about the Home Key app, application that we've sent, we've actually applied for. The Home Key application is taking, um, a motel, fixing it up and converting it into a temporary housing for next step for homeless individuals who's, who are experiencing homelessness. It actually, the thing about these two, some of the, a lot of these programs, people need to understand that they're also setting them up, um, for other entities to come in there. So in other words, if somebody wants to get help for drug or alcohol addiction of some sort, then these will be available some, through some of these programs. So the project, you know, Home Key, there'll be somebody there being able to hopefully set them up with those, those sort of things in setting them up for whatever the next step is in their, in their life. Um, next one is affordable housing. We as a city have been working on a lot of different affordable housing. Uh, whether people believe it or not, we have a lack of affordable housing in Siskiyou County, Waireka especially. Our percentage is, I can't remember, it's like three percent or something of available housing right now.
One point three percent.
One point three percent. So even worse. So that comes back on us as being able to have affordable housing for individuals. So we've been working on that, um, as a city, uh, big time, all the way around. Pallet Shelter is another thing that we've been working on. There's another, this is a program possibly that we might be working on down the road with the council's permission. It's a pallet shelter. We actually have a, a piece of property at the very end of Foothill that we were talking about originally doing, uh, urban campsite. We have actually now a proposal that we're looking at possibly doing a pallet shelter. Pallet shelters are like little mini sheds. I don't know if people are familiar with that. So, um, they actually have little, little spaces, one or two bedroom in these pallet shelters. There's a good picture of that. These pallet shelters have electricity in them and whatnot for, so people can hook up some, for some of those sorts of, same thing with this is if we develop, help develop one of these pallet shelter areas, there'll be somebody onsite all the time, twenty-four seven, watching over these places, keeping them safe. And there also will be that availability for, for people to go, um, hook them up with services again. Hooking them up with drug and alcohol counseling, hooking them up possibly with some type of transitional housing. So that's, you know, some of the things, measurable steps that we've been taking and they're, you know, been huge. I don't have that. So getting back to the housing, the homeless shelter was one of the things we looked at and we're moving hopefully, um, soon on through the county has actually been doing all the work on this. It's looking really good. Hopefully in October, we're looking at possibly seeing that opening up. Home shelter, excuse me, Crossroads was what we looked at first. Home Key, we talked about that, pallet shelters, we talked about affordable housing and, and then market rate housing. So that's another, another thing for in a sense, um, market rate housing is getting housing that's more affordable for people around this area. Uh, service and enforcement, um, homeless, the homeless officer again, we, you know, these are things we're working on, the PLHA grant. Uh, policy and code enforcement, critical infrastructure. So getting to the critical infrastructure, we drafted that up. Actually, we were working on that for quite a while. We finally got it up and going. Critical infrastructure is one of those things to keep all of us safe. Um, we, we originally drafted it up because we seen, um, a high fire danger on the Greenway area. Um, so in regards to that, we started working on this critical infrastructure. Um, but it actually encompasses a lot of things. The critical infrastructure keeps our, our water safe. It keeps our, our services safe. So in other words, places that individuals shouldn't be hanging out, keeps them safe. Um, our city yard, we need to keep it safe because that's where our water source is, our sewer and all that is. So we these, these areas, we need to keep it safe. Schools, we need to keep our, our schools safe. So that's part of our critical infrastructure and being able to enforce that. So these are some of the things we work on, um, shopping cart ordinance. That was, you know, a lot of people think, oh, the shopping cart ordinance, that was nothing. It was weird, you know, why did they do that? Well, we start, we drafted up the shopping cart ordinance because we're seeing so often that where the homeless individuals were, they would leave behind their shopping carts. And we're fortunate, you know, to have in this area, um, uh, some individuals that help keep that clean and work on that, keeping this area clean, keeping the fire, keeping those, uh, um, shopping carts out and keeping the trash down too. Because as you know, you've seen them time and time again that when they have shopping carts laying around, they get full, full of trash. So we've, you know, tried to eliminate that. Last is then working and probably a lot of people have seen this, um, with different organizations and whatnot on keeping the fire lines, um, cleaned up and keeping those like safe, especially in the encampments. Up above, if you go above there, um, on, uh, Campus Drive there, you'll see that there were the, where the encampments are, we have actually dual fire line going on and that's to keep the fire danger down. And there's been other fire lines. As you can see up in the hills, we've worked on fire lines there where that's all through other agencies and stuff like that. But it's still to keep us all safe and that's our primary goal. Um, when we get, comes down to it is keeping our city safe. And that's what we've got to look at. So, um, areas of focus, we're moving, you know, we're moving in the right direction. Is there more that can be done? Yeah, absolutely. There's more work that can be done, but in regards to that, we got, our hands are tied on certain laws. So we have to keep that in mind. And we look at, you know, celebrate accomplishments. We've, you know, a lot of people think we haven't got any, we haven't had anything done. We're not doing anything as a city, but we have. We've actually accomplished quite a bit in a short amount of time. We have been in stall mode for quite a while. A lot of these issues that we're facing now, they should have been handled years ago. And we are now catching up with a lot of other cities, the same problem. They're all catching up on how to address this issue properly. Time to mobilize, time to get together and get some stuff done. Now, you know, when you look at this, unhoused individuals are not just a Waireka problem. It's, it's a nationwide problem. Uh, especially the West Coast. Um, last, the last twenty-twenty-two numbers showed um, a hundred and one hundred and fourteen thousand, four hundred and ninety-one unhoused individuals in just the state of California alone. That's a lot of numbers. That's, that's just the unhoused one. That's not, that's the ones that are sleeping without a bed and a tent, a hundred and fourteen thousand, four hundred and ninety-one. They predict that there's, um, around twenty thousand, um, homeless individuals in San Francisco alone. That's what their latest prediction is. So this is not something that we're just fighting in Waireka or Siskiyou County. It is nationwide. And it's something that we as a city, um, have been working, collaborating with all these other individual, other groups and definitely been collaborating with the county and it's been huge. We're actually seeing some, some real huge positive, uh, leaps and bounds now and it's been great. And it's all due to working together, collaborating with the county, collaborating with all these other entities and stuff and it's making a huge difference. I know a lot of people, like I said, don't see it, but it's happening. And as long as we keep making steps forward, it's going to be, it's going to, we're going to help, um, make a positive impact. Are we going to solve it? Probably not until the state of California starts and the federal government starts figuring out the proper way to handle it and addressing the key roots to these problems and not just putting a band-aid on it. But as a city, we're doing all of our, all we can legally to address it. And we're going to be seeing some more stuff. Like I said, there's more things in the pipeline. There's more things that we're going to be coming back in front of the city council. Um, and addressing some of these issues, but that's where we're at now. Um, like I said, I'll address some questions, short, sweet questions right now. Um, very short, sweet. If anybody has any questions, if not, I, like I said, I invite you to throw out some of these comment question boards so I can bring that back to the COC and back to, um, the city here and so we can address some of these issues, but.
Okay. So we're going to have to have Mr. Cake take a seat and we'll have you come up and ask a question at the podium. And, um, he ran over his time by quite a minute. So we're going to have to, I hate to do this, we'll have to move quickly. Cause we have another presentation coming up. So we had to cut it down a little bit. Okay.
Hi, I'm Les Bennett. Um, a quick question. The Crossroads fifty units, how many people can that hold? Fifty people or what do you mean units?
No, it actually could hold more because some of those are, um, multi-bedroom or multi-unit levels. So, yeah, it will hold more. I'm sure, I'm sure the exact number. I'm not sure the exact number on how many, but it will hold down more than fifty individuals. Cause those, some of those end, uh, some of those complexes are actually more than one individual. Yeah.
And same question with the shelter that's about to be done. And then the, if we end up doing the, um,
Project Home Key.
So project, the project Home Key is, uh, like I said, is a, is a hotel motel that they're converting. I'm not sure how many rooms was that one in?
And is it same thing, one person a room or how are we doing this?
That's, that's another one of those things that there can be multiple people in some of those rooms too. Yeah.
And then if you take the piece of property at Foothill and end up doing those little shelters, are those-
So the one on Foothill, the one on the base of Foothill, that's the possible, um, pallet shelter one that I was discussing. That, like I said, we have, we're discussing that as a council right now. So, um, we'll have to look and see. We're looking at funding right now for that. So there is actually some funding out there. Um, and what they've proven on, on the pallet shelters and stuff like that is keeping these individuals in, uh, an area safer, an area has a way less impact on the community. So in other words, um, that's why we're looking at the, uh, going with the, the pallet shelter structure versus an urban campsite or something. Because these have individual structures that keeps them safe and keeps our, our town safe period. So.
And on that list, there was, if you were calling it the homeless shelter, so is that, uh, that-
There is another, yes. So the county is actually doing a, an actual homeless shelter. Um, I think there's thirty beds in that one. Is that right?
Thirty-five, I believe.
And thirty-five beds in that one. That's bed. So that would be individual.
And how many people did you say are unhoused right now out of the five hundred homeless that are unhoused?
Um, we had two, I got that up there, sorry.
So with the numbers that we're talking of the different options, is it anywhere near two hundred that we can house when all of that is put together?
You got to keep in mind these numbers, those numbers, the two hundred and some odd numbers that are un- unhoused. So here we go, right in there, two hundred and three one that are unsheltered. That's all Siskiyou County. So that's, that's, you know, you're talking about happy camp. You're talking about all the outlining areas and stuff like that. Yeah. The biggest majority, um, would be here and, and obviously in Waireka. But our, our numbers are nowhere near that, you know. would be here and obviously in Wairika. But our, our numbers are nowhere near that, you know, just in Wairika alone.
I'm just trying to wrap my brain around like we, what we're doing, you know, how many that can act, will actually.
Actually, yeah. And so there's, no matter what, no matter what we do, I don't care if you have a thousand beds here. You know, you're not going to get every homeless individual to go to those, plain and simple. I mean, when we go up to, we, we toured, we toured the Rogue Retreat up in Medford. And as you can see, there are still numerous people that are camp out along the freeways and everything else. You're not going to get all those individuals to stay in a shelter. But what that does do for us as a city, it actually does give us the ability to say, hey, we cannot, because of our critical infrastructure, it does give us the ability to say, you cannot camp out in certain areas without having these beds available. We can't do that. So that's where we're at as a city right now because we don't really have a place for them to go. We cannot technically kick them out of some of these areas. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay.
And Mr. Mayor, the city manager, just so you know, I'm not timing these because there's kind of a back and forth conversation.
Yeah, yeah, sorry. Thank you.
We auto Wairika. My question is for crossroads. Who actually owns that? Who's managing the property? Who takes care of utilities? Who does damage control, takes care of the landscaping? Is it the city, the county, the state, the feds? Who does that?
It's a developer called, the acronym is RCHDC. They own the property, they own the building, the service provider will be the county.
So if they own the building, then if somebody takes their fist and puts a hole through the wall or messes up the plumbing or the electricity, does that entity then take care of that and pay for it? And is there a sunset clause? Or does it go on forever?
Yeah, there's a, there's a term to that agreement and I'm not sure if that's 20 years. Thank you, Ms. Oberg. And, but yeah, if somebody puts a fist through or the landscaping is not getting done, that entity is responsible for.
And then after the 20 years, what happens to that property? Does the owner then not have the responsibility to it? Does it go to the city or the county?
No, it would remain with RCHDC. Inevitably, there's some apartments all over the United States, but there's some here in town that they sunset, the term comes up, maybe they're low income. And ultimately, I believe we have one currently doing this. They reapply generally to get more funding to maintain another term. So they'll have the opportunity to determine if RCHDC wants to get into a longer term deal after the 20 years.
And is that company then subsidized by government? In other words, they're not taking a loss on that?
Oh, absolutely. Yeah, there's, there's no money to be necessarily made. It's not market rate housing. So it's definitely government subsidized.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. One more question and then we're gonna, then that's one of those things. If anybody else has any questions, we have the question and comment cards. Feel free to, you know, to fill out, bring them to me. We would like to, we'd like to hear comments. I mean, I really would like to hear people's ideas on how to move forward positively. I mean, it really is. It's, this is a, this is a community problem, not just, not just Wairika, but it's also Siski County. This is also the whole North State. Like I said, the numbers before, half of these individuals here that we surveyed were people of Wairika. And so this is all people around here. We need to, we need to address this as, as a, you know, as a whole. And everybody needs to work together on this. It's not just me working on it. It's not just our city manager working on it. It's not our, just our chief of police working on it. This is a, is a community problem that we need to figure out and not kick the can down the road. You might want to raise that one up. That's short people. It's not so bad.
Thank you. My name is Asa Bennett. I have a couple of follow-up questions to a question that was asked earlier regarding the, the apartment complex and stuff like that. When will the numbers be available? Exactly how the square footage is going to be divided and how many people that will house?
As far as the apartments itself?
Sure.
They've already got that all. I mean, it's, it's.
So how many, how many people?
I, I don't know. Do you know?
Maybe we, maybe we could have supervisor Ogeren come down to answer some of the questions as regards to crossroads because that is a county project. And so she and Mr. Ledbetter might have some information as well.
The different programs say that the shelter or the crossroads or the the complex on Foothill, that type of thing. Is the city instigating any type of, will people that apply for those and are approved for those be subject to any type of substance abuse testing or anything like that to start moving them forward in a positive direction?
So going, getting back to that, most everything like the homeless shelters itself is a low barrier shelter. So in other words, you cannot force them not to do drugs. So they can, they can't, they need to be clean in this, in the facility, put it that way. Okay. They need to be clean in the facility. We can't stop them from doing drugs. Now we can encourage them to take on and like the, the homeless shelter that's going to be going in. They just actually have what they call a navigation center also. So that navigation center inside of that building will actually have people, counselors working there to try to hook them up with whether it be drug or alcohol or just maybe they need some type of transitional housing to take them to the next level. The mental illness, that's, that's a huge one, mental illness. Hopefully when they go to these facilities, they will, we'll be able to hook them up with it. Can we force them? No, we cannot force them to take and go through rehabs of any sort. Unfortunately, that's the way the law is. You cannot force anybody to do that. It's like we couldn't force you to stop drinking or something like that.
Earn their monthly approval on their housing by passing a clean drug.
Well, there is, there is a certain amount that they can only, they can only stay there a certain amount of time. So some of these programs, they can only, depends on which program they go through, can only stay there at a certain amount of time. If this is all transitional, it's not, it's not permanent housing. So.
But of course, of the numbers that you stated earlier, you know, you were going over numbers of alcohol abuse, substance abuse, that type of thing. Now, since it was just voluntarily information, we're all kind of assuming that some of those numbers are a little skewed.
Oh, yeah.
Because we know the substance abuse is a much higher percentage than those on those forms. So isn't the help with substance abuse or, you know, isn't that part of the transition process?
Yeah. If you don't mind, I'd like to weigh in here, Mr. Cake. So ultimately there's terms when, like crossroads is a prime example, when the county went after the funding to fund that, there's these grant terms on what the requirements are for operation. And so there's going to be the service provider in this instance will be the county. But on the shelter, they have another service provider coming in that deals with these issues. And so ultimately the county doesn't really have any say as far as what the state has set up. And they have this idea at the moment that it's housing first. And then once you have a roof over your head, the service provider, in this instance at Crossroads, the county will come in every single day with multiple social workers. Everyone will have a case file. And ultimately they will be actively working with those people to have those code dependencies. But ultimately that's the difference, I think, between the private development that's happening here in the city of Wairika is that they don't want those stipulations so that they're taking donations. So they can be a lot more strict on what, what they can allow to, to enter into the facility. Whereas when you take the state and federal funding, you're just at the mercy of what their requirements are.
So the city itself doesn't have the guidelines on, like you, you have to meet our requirements to operate as such or, or how you take your, your influx of people that you're accepting?
Yeah. And, and also too, just so everybody's aware, the city will not own any of these projects. Ultimately, they'll all be managed generally in joint through the county within a private developer as the owner. So if the city council for the city of Wairika wants to move forward with the pallet shelter opportunity, because the, the county did go after what they call an encampment grant. And that grant's purpose is to clean up the encampment on Campus Drive and remove all people, find housing for them. And so if we do move forward with the pallet shelter, that would just be this organization here, this five, the city council would be voting on whether or not they wanted to lease the property to the county. And, and with the home key project as well, the city council will vote on the 20th, actually, if they want to move forward with a grant application where the city would apply. And then ultimately the city would be removed because the owner would be, in this instance, it would be RCHDC as well. And then it would be the county taking care of the service provider, social worker opportunities. So the city has a very limited oversight, but we're trying to be extremely active with the solutions that are available, if that makes any sense.
Thank you. Awesome. Thank you.
And I just have a question. If Nancy wants to, if you want to come down and answer a couple of questions. But I want to make it kind of clear that it's just not people that substance abuse that's going into transitional housing. They could be a mother of PTSD, correct? From a physical, like a domestic violence or something that's applying for apartment that's, you know, been homeless or whatever with a child. So it's not, I don't want it to like, just be focused on all these people with substance abuse are occupying these properties because that's not what, when Dr. Clark was here and she presented how it could be a plethora of different cases of people for transitional housing. So I don't want to get out there that it's just for, and it's been put out there that it was just for drug addicts or mentally ill. They have to qualify in different things and fill out application. So it's just not, so am I correct when Dr. Clark got up here and spoke a few months ago about it? It's a just not drug addicts that are going to live there. It's a plethora of people who can apply that qualify for the next step, correct?
Okay. Thank you, Nancy.
They're chattering. Can you turn?
Yeah, it is kind of cold in here. I, well, every time I touch it, I mess it up.
So, and we're specifically talking about crossroads.
Crossroads, because that was the majority of the questions about crossroads.
Fifty units, 25 for low income, 24 for mentally ill slash homeless that are in the system. So, which means they have to currently be accepting services. So the way I understand it at this point, we're looking at somewhere around October-ish for completion. And RCHCD is already in the process or soon to be in the process of accepting applications and reviewing applications for clients. So I am not familiar and that would be Sarah's purview to come back and really discuss it again if you guys want her to. But there are very specific rules for, I'll say engagement, for allowing people in there and the rules for the lease agreement. And most of what they need to deal with are behavioral issues. It's not about whether they are engaging in any kind of drug use or alcohol use, but it's about their behavior while they're there. They have to maintain the facilities. They have to maintain good behavior. And they have to be good citizens and good tenants. And if they can do that, they can stay. And that's really what it's all about. And they are encouraged to use the services that are available to them and to be good citizens and to try to assimilate back into the community. And that is the goal for everybody. So that's the goal. That's really what the whole program is about. Does that answer your question?
I think it does for everybody. Thank you, Supervisor Ogeren.
I just want to add to the.
Oh, yep. Come on back.
Took me a minute to figure out the name, but the navigation center is called Project Base Camp.
Base Camp.
And it's between 30 and 35 beds is what I've been told. And that's in the works and that's yet another, it is a congregation shelter. And that's pretty much all the way to becoming reality. So that's enough.
All right. Thank you.
One last thing, when, when Supervisor Ogeren spoke of mental illness, people ought to realize what the, what a classification of mental illness is. Mental illness can be as simple as somebody just taking medication for depression. So keeping that in mind when you start, people start judging people with mental illness, it might be, might be your best friend. Literally, because what the classification of mental illness is, somebody that could be taking pills for mental, for depression. So you got to look at mental illness has a different faces and it's, it's not just cut and dry is what people think of some crazy person walking down the road. So there's also that.
Right. Well, thank you.
That's it. So.
All right. So like, so we invite you to fill out the cards that Councilman Cake has out there. Then also, you know, you're welcome to go to the city Wairika website. His information, his email is on there. He's our person who works hard on the homeless. We appreciate his presentation. And with that, we thank you. All right, Ryan, number six. This is public, public comments. Public participation is welcomed and invited at all city council meetings. This time is set aside for residents to address the city council on matters listed on the consent agenda as well as other items not included on the regular agenda. If your comments concern an item noted on the regular agenda, please address the council when that item is open for public comment. The city requests that persons addressing the city council refrain from making personal slanderous, profane and disruptive remarks. Council members, when recognized by the mayor, may ask questions of the presenter, but no action may be taken by the city council during public comment section of the meeting. Under the Brown Act, the city council is prohibited from discussing or taking action on any item not listed on the posted agenda. This time is set if I had residents to address the city council on all matters, on matters listed on the consent agenda as well as other items not included on the regular agenda. If your comments concern an item noted on the regular agenda, please address the council when that item is open for public comment. Please speak into the microphone from the podium. The pod electronically adjusts up and down to accommodate the speaker. Please state your name for the record prior to your comments. Please address the city council as a whole. If you have documents to present, please provide a minimum of seven copies. Please remember your marks to five minutes. Public comment period is not intended to be a question and answer period or conversations with the council or city staff. Do I have any public comments at this time?
Can we go to Mr. Mayor, this is the city manager. Can we go to Caltrans for public comment if possible? I believe they're on Zoom.
Hello.
Caltrans on?
Yes. Can you hear me? Okay?
Yes. And you have public comment or?
Yes, I do. My name is Catherine Lowe. I am with Caltrans District Two. I am the project manager for the Wairika project. And I can turn on my video here. Just want to give a quick update on the project. It is a roadway rehabilitation.
And you're talking for our audience, in case they're, don't know, but they should know that it's our main street highway three project, correct?
That is correct. Thank you. The purpose of the project is to reconstruct the roadway pavement structural sections. We are also doing ADA improvements, traffic calming reconfigurations, drainage and utility upgrades and bridge rail upgrades at the Wairika Creek Bridge. We are currently working on the stage two, which is part of segment one, which is adjacent to Moonlit Oaks intersection. There is a sign that went up recently to let people know that the off-ramp onto Moonlit Oaks is going to be closed. We don't know the exact day that that closure is going to begin. The closure is only going to be for 10 days and it is going to affect travelers exiting I-5. We will have a meeting tomorrow that will have a three week look ahead schedule. And we are glad to hear that a representative from the city will be attending. Our resident engineer wanted to share that we really appreciate the communication we're receiving from the public as well as from the city. One of the corrections we've already implemented was the timed traffic signals. We're not keeping up with the traffic flow. So we have since put on traffic sensors and we believe that this has improved. So we have since put on traffic sensors and we believe that this has improved the traffic flow. Yeah, let me double check if I've covered everything for at least this week and next week. Yes, so that off-ramp off of I-5 will be closed next week. We are planning to start it as soon as we finish the work that we're intending to finish this week. And then I do have a comment here that there was some confusion of when the Moonlit Oaks intersection is going to be closed. And that is not going to happen until September. Okay, that concludes my presentation today.
I'm sorry, can you repeat that intersection for our council member McCoy? That was?
Yes.
Moonlit Oaks?
Yeah, Moonlit Oaks is going to be, that's where we have the hundred and five hour closure. And that's where we'll be working twenty-four hours a day to get that road opened again. And that is currently scheduled for September.
September, okay. Okay. All right, and then this is the mayor. So after you move out of Moonlit Oaks, so that area, you're going to be coming down north, correct?
Correct.
By the C H office and down a little bit further past to Oberlin. Correct?
Yes, I'm looking for where Oberlin might be mentioned. I don't see it on.
Not that far yet.
Yeah, not far yet. Sorry.
Okay. Thank you so much. Or do you want to take questions from our audience?
Sure, I certainly can.
I'll go to the audience first for questions. If they have a question for our Caltrans representative, come on down the podium. All right.
County Supervisor Nancy Ogren, one quick question about the, the off-ramp closures. Don't include the intersection at Moonlit Oaks, the actual intersection for local traffic will still be open?
Yes, you can move through the intersection on Highway Three or Main Street. It's Moonlit Oaks that will be closed in September.
So just to clarify, if I needed to get to the east side of Moonlit Oaks from the west side, that would be impossible? It would be, the street itself would be closed?
Correct.
Okay.
But north-south on Highway Three will continue to be open during the closure of the off-ramps?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Thank you. Any other questions for Caltrans? We have another gentleman coming down.
Just a curious question. I've actually was going to, Mr. Ledbetter about this one day. There's a tremendous amount of temporary repairs along Main Street and not trying to complain about that, but I'm just curious if there's a minimum specifications on elevations of road surfaces when you make contemporary repairs.
So I, I, I think we're talking about the cold asphalt patches. Is that, is that correct?
Yeah, there's just a stretch on Main Street right now that it's a nightmare to go through. So just, I know there's a lot of construction that can continue on. And if in their contractual paperwork, if there are specifications for those cold patches, that it would be nice if there's all.
I see.
They're pretty rough, is kind of what he's saying.
It's pretty rough. Okay, yeah, I can definitely elevate that to our RE. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Thank you for the question. Anybody else in our audience? All right, we have, we have another one?
One white, City Warricka resident, just for an FII for you. The the least lot next to Shenanigans is being utilized by one of your subcontractors. Is that correct?
She might not be aware, order please. She might not be aware of it, but he's talking about a vacant lot between a hotel and a restaurant on Main Street. That's currently utilized by, maybe, I don't think it's Caltrans, I think it's one of the subcontractors. So I don't know what the question is, or you might not have that information, but go ahead and ask.
Well, just an FYI for you, the, that subcontractor utilized a piece of heavy equipment to damage repairing waterway on the Warricka Creek, which is a federally protected waterway. They were then caught pumping out of the Warricka Creek to keep their gravel wet. I don't know if you were aware of that or not, but the US Fish and Wildlife is now aware of that. Thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
Contractor is aware of that as well, at this point. All right. Okay, any other further questions from our audience? Okay, I'm going to come to our council members for questions for our Caltrans representative. I'm going to go to this side first. So I'll go to Mr. Councilman Davis. No questions? Okay, Councilman Baker? No questions? Councilman Keg? Okay, and Proton, Council McCoy had a couple.
Catherine, I want to thank you for being here tonight. This is Councilman McCoy. Late in the calendar, calendar month of May, the South Off-ramp was marked with electric signs that it was going to be closed from June sixth through tenth. That was not, doesn't sound like you were aware of that, that it was marked at that time? Because you made a comment that it was, you know, that you just.
Yes.
You guys just marked it. So I'm wondering if there, if there is, how's the communication? Because what's also cut, you just said ten days rather than five. And then I'm wondering what, how you're communicating this to our north, South Siskiyou businesses? Because they're not happy. I've been approached probably four or five times in, just, just in the last week or so.
Oh, I see. Okay.
Sounds like a lack of communication to the city and to businesses. That's, I guess that's what I'm getting at. I'm wondering how we're going to do a better job communicating all three, all of us.
Agreed. One of the methods we're hoping will work is our weekly meetings are held on Wednesdays and we've invited a representative from the city to attend those meetings. And that way we'll have a three-week look ahead schedule that we can share. I, I'm speculating, but if the schedule showed that it was going to be closed this week and it got pushed to next week, that does sometimes happen with construction.
Okay, and are you inviting city businesses to this as well?
No, it's, it's not a public meeting.
Okay. Is there any way to get less lag time and a little more, you know, like a couple of weeks of leeway to let our businesses know? Because this really is hurting our businesses. I mean, it's
I see.
Quite a mess up there. One of the things that I've asked for through LTC was to get a left-turn lane going south on to Moonlit Oaks West, because what we do is we have, we have, we essentially have three places where cars can pull up. One pulls up and hangs a right. And then we get two other, two lines going there and then they jockey for the one lane going straight ahead. And it's, I mean, it happens every time. I, I can say it happens every time I go up there, whether I'm hanging a left or whether I'm going straight or whether I'm going right. And it's, you know, I mean, I, I don't think we've had accidents because of that. We've had other accidents up there. But I'm just wondering, how much longer are we going to be dealing with that where, you know, because people just don't know where to go. They don't know where to go to turn left, or they don't know where to go to go straight. Maybe that's what it is. They're just in a hurry.
Yeah, that will be resolved once we move out of that area. I understand that the left turn lane is something that is constrained by the roadway. It was something that we looked at after you suggested that.
So it's not something that you plan to resolve while you're working? You just plan to let it resolve itself? Just normally, you're gonna, you're gonna work and let people, let the motors fend for themselves and then it's catch as catch can is what I'm asking. Because it sounds like you're not, you know, like Caltrans isn't receptive to that. You're the second person I've talked to.
So I'm checking my notes here. I'm, I'm trying to see how much longer we're going to be in that area. I wish I had a map. I do not. So I'm sorry I'm taking so long.
And then, well, my last thing, I mean, I, I still like to have, I'd like to see something done up there before we have a, some kind of a severe accident. And I, and again, I get, I've got people, I get people complain, not a lot. I probably had eight or 10 people complain to me in five weeks. It's not a ton, but. But the last thing is you said that you're going to close that intersection for a hundred and five hours. Now, when we initially started this, and it was before you, before our city manager came on, we were told by the last project manager, it would be fifty-five hours it would be closed. Has it now, has the time doubled? And what's the issue with having to? Because again, that's, that's a cause for concern is that, that people, including the manager of Rayleigh's, has asked me, when are we closing that intersection down? They're very concerned.
Right, so I misspoke. It's the avenue that's going to be closed. And as far as I can tell, it has always been in a hundred and five hour closure. It was included, I think, in the plan set.
Thank you.
I think, well, I don't know. I think it was two different areas. It was fifty-five area, or fifty-five hours by Black Bear and then a hundred and five hours through the Moonlit Oaks underneath the underpass. They're two different areas, I think.
Ten days.
Yeah.
And what I recall is fifty-five hours with Black Bear and with closing the intersection.
I recall it the other way, but that the majority was over on the other side. All right. I get complaints too, but I tell my citizens, I know that I don't like the answer, but, you know, they complain our roads are terrible. And we're getting a, almost a fifty million or plus project that's going to beautify our town, that our main street is going to be safer, it's going to be nicer, our landscape is going to change. And I know it's frustrating, but I ask for all our citizens to have patience and our businesses, we fill you. But it's going to be a beautiful project when it's done. And we're lucky to have Caltrans leading that project and getting it done for our little town, because it's really going to be beautiful when it's done. If we could have saw all the plans we had up here and the presentations ever since I took my seat here two and a half years ago. And it started before of just the input of everything wanted from landscape to safety, just everything. It's going to be a huge, just a huge change for our town. So we understand frustrations. I've had them. And I tell everybody to hang in there. I know it's not the answer they want to hear, but. And it's just, I think it's more frustrating at the south end of town, because that's where everything is for us. We have our major shopping and most of our fast food places, a couple of restaurants and people that go commute to the valley. So it is jammed up out there. So once they start moving down, it's going to be a lot better. So just have your patience and they'll be off of that area soon. So we thank you so much for your time and being with us. We look forward to hearing from you again. And have a good evening. All right, so now I'm going to go to regular public comment.
Blood's away. One white, City Warricka, your bi-monthly or monthly Greenhorn Park and Greenway project update. Okay, here we go. Volume of activity on Greenhorn Park is amazing. I can't believe the number of people that are utilizing their park and it's used to the maximum possible levels. There's new signage up there for the disco golf and also for the town. That's very nice. It's very nice. I want to compliment the city on doing that. Trails are clear and usable. I observed no trash dumps, illegal camp scene. Thanks for that. That part is working nicely now. Blacksmith shop still needs repairs as the vandalism, as the graffiti, some of it is not appropriate for mixed company or single company. And it is racist at that. Greenway, different story. Orland Road, the United States Forest Service building. There have been observed salmonid fry and juveniles in the hundreds in that stretch of waterway. That means we have steelhead and potentially coho salmon. Kind of hard to tell when they're underwater, but you can still tell they're probably salmonids. And they are flooding that area. It's a great spot for those fish. There are currently three illegal camps on the Orland Road entrance, east side. They just pop back up. There's trash associated with those illegal camps that need to be addressed, because no matter what Boise said, you can still enforce basic laws of society. They also are some aggressive dogs right next to the walkway. And of course, the typical under the influence individuals sitting in the middle of the creek chanting to whoever. Trash dumps reported sixty days ago are still present in our beloved Greenway. Those leaking toxins, especially after a rain like we had today, has a negative impact on our coho and steelhead fry and juveniles. Remember, they're tearing down dams because of those salmon. I wouldn't want to, I wouldn't want to press them too hard on the creek. New trash dumps at the Mount Chast title entrance and on the west side of the Greenway at the United, United States Forest Service, I contacted Forest Service, it's right up against their building on the west trail. They said they would take care of that. The floating bridge at the Mount Chast area is up a little bit. You can cross, but it is not IDA accessible, which is a requirement under Prop eighty-four. So that must be available for disabled individuals to utilize that trail. Here's an interesting bit of information. Orland Road access a thousand feet down is clear of homeless, or I didn't say homeless, illegal camps and trash. Did a nice job in that area. In that area, I observed a hen, turkey, and three chicks, quail, deer, mallard, and songbirds. The animals disappeared the moment I got into the homeless or illegal campground area farther down. So is there correlation? Probably. One of the correlations should be, let's start enforcing that critical infrastructure ordinance that you put into gear. All right, now we're going to go over the welcome center. I got, we got those new critical infrastructure signs up. And lo and behold, we have an illegal camp that just popped up with trash going around the camp next to the trail and into our creek. By God, there's also a shopping cart that magically appeared from somewhere, I wonder where, and ended up right in the middle of the creek. That's not acceptable. There's a mattress in the creek. There's graffiti on the bridge and on the mural still. The bridge, the footbridge on the south side is still not on its footing and is also not accessible to individual disabilities. There is still, continued to be a large dump there after today's rainstorm. I can't imagine the amount of toxins that reached from that dump into our waterway.
All right, thank you.
Okay, one more.
No, your time's up. Thank you. I got to keep going. Yep, he's buzzing me over there. He's buzzing me over there.
First of all, that time and not give me an extra minute?
Louise? Come on up, Louise. No.
Good evening. I'm here tonight to ask for, I have three requests of the council members and the mayor. And my first request is that to have the, one of our new city attorneys to look at SB eleven eighty-six, which was authored by Weiner, who's a senator in California. And it's called the Medicinal Cannabis Patient Rights of Access Act, and that was passed in twenty twenty-two. And there's some question about that. The the verbiage is questionable. It's confusing. In some paragraphs, it says that the only requirement is that the only requirement is, is that you do not impede delivery of medical marijuana in your city or in your county, and then some areas it alludes to perhaps you have to have a storage area. I talked with the board, with one of the board members, and he also agreed with me. And also Senator Dally's office, his staff also said that it was questionable, so I'm asking that we could use a lot, utilize our new attorneys and ask them to look that over. My second request is to allow Cameron, his name is Cameron Moody, from Shasta County, to be on the next agenda to do a presentation on marijuana. And my third request is to arrange for the presentation on marijuana to take place before the council votes on the marijuana, the medical marijuana grant for medical marijuana access in Wyrika. I have a bio on Cameron Moody. And some of you were given the opportunity to meet with him and Kathy Grinstad, who do public education on it. I, I know that they called the mayor and the mayor was busy. I know that Aaron did talk to Councilman McCoy. The invitation was extended to Dwayne Keg, Councilman Keg, to come to the Patriots meeting so that you could hear these two folks speak. And Councilman Drake was there and so was Colleen. The only person who wasn't there was, was the city manager and Juliana. I was hoping that Juliana was here tonight, because one of my questions, my, my question, not a request, is why do we need $100,000 for a grant to?
Oh.
That was close.
Wow.
Make a good point.
My question is about the $100,000 grant, because it's my understanding, and I could be wrong, and I was hoping that Juliana would be here tonight, is this working?
Mine is, I think yours is.
That I know that Juliana was the city planner for Mount Chast and I am to speak to the city council regarding marijuana. So I don't know how that works, I don't know who decides what is on the agenda, but that's my request. And I have copies of this file. And I know that you can't answer questions tonight, but I, again, I would really appreciate if you would consider my request, thank you.
Thank you, Louise.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Can we, uh, are we on, Rhonda, can we, do we need to take a brief recess?
Okay. We're gonna take
To the, those online, we lost power here at City Hall and I'm trying to get things restarted.
Yeah. We'll take a, we'll take a five minute recess, so we can come back online for the video and we'll come back to, um,
You're coming through that.
So we'll adjourn it as 8:03. Okay, we'll re-adjourn, uh, 8:10. And we are still being recorded live, um, we just can't see them, but they can see us up there, so we can continue our meeting. Okay, public comment. Mr. Radford.
Steve Radford, 409 Evergreen. Number one, I just really appreciate you, uh, Mayor Middleton, your, your leadership and your comment and, and asking the city to just be patient with the construction. I'm a contractor, you know, it is what it is, they are working really, really hard, they try to address everything that's going on there with us, they had a report here a couple, a month or so ago, two months ago, whatever it was. And I asked about some couple of things and they addressed it very, very, very nicely. But I think, you know, your leadership in that, Corey Mayor Middleton was, uh, good. That's what the city needs is, is for people to be patient and deal with it, because it is going to be awesome. And they can always go all the way around, we're not some big city where we're that big of, you know, uh, hurry. You know, I go all around, around the other way, you know, because I'm not going to deal with all that craziness. The tourists are in town acting stupid, you know? Go around, come on, we're local people, come on. The homelessness thing is ridiculous, it's, it's just stupid. And I'm sorry, that's a derogatory remark, but, uh, you know, I have free speech. So, um, you know, I'm 73 years old, I witnessed the beginning of welfare. I was cleaning swimming pools down in, in Southern California, those apartment buildings were empty. And then welfare came along and those apartment builders started having people home during the day with their stereos going, swimming in the pools and all that kind of stuff. It changed dramatically and it hasn't stopped. It's grown to such, to where we are today. This is communism, this is the socialist communist system that they've been setting up since 1763. And you don't want to put that in your heads and, and work on that, you just want to keep on putting money into the same sickness, the same disease, the same dysfunction. And it just, it's not going to, it's not going to get fixed, you know? The cities that have the worst homeless problem are the cities that are the most socialist. You know, I mean, you call it right or left, whatever you want to call it, but those cities are the, 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 the biggest homeless problems are the, the the cities that lean more, you know, liberal, I guess you want to call it. So look at the, look at the math, look at the, look what's going on. It's really right in front of us, it's very simple to figure it out. So, you know, we don't help people by helping them, we help people when they ask for help, we help them. You know, I mean, I've helped numerous people, numerous people out of my pocket when I think that they're worth it. You know, when I see that they're trying to do something. But a lot, I've been in AA for 35 years, I've been sober for 35 years, I've seen numerous occasions where people just don't want help. We try to help them, they don't want help, they want to stay in the street. I had a guy in my house for two weeks, I said, the refrigerator is right there, the bedroom's there, the shower's there. It's wide open for you, just give me two weeks with you and see if you like it. You know, it's wide open. He said, no, I can't stay here, I gotta go back to the bush. My, my stepbrother said he had to go back to the bush, I gave my house to him. He had to go back to the bush. I mean, that's just their choice. These people up there, that's their choice, more times than not, you're putting a lot of energy, a lot of our tax money into something that is just feeding the the monster. And that's a socialist monster that this country was not built on, we were built on integrity, morals, values and traditions. And, you know, that's what I understand, that's what I that's what still makes me proud to be an American, proud to be Siskiyou County. I love this place, I'm passionate about this place. Somebody mentioned the, uh, the thing up there, the, the you know, the, Greenhorn. You know, well, I've already been talking to them about the Stamper, the roof on the Stamper, that's my next project. You know, we've got to put a new cedar roof on that thing. We're working on it, you know, it's best, whoever wants to do it, but I'm working on that one, I'm trying to put the material together, I've talked to Ben already about it. And it's going to take some time, because we've got to get a man lift, okay, we got to donate or whatever we're going to do with that. But, I mean, you know, this, I'm just trying to show you my passion, okay? Thanks very much.
Thank you, Steve. All right, yeah. Any other public comment? Okay, Don Marie?
Um, first of all, sorry, I didn't mean to be out of order, Mr. Mayor. Um, I was just trying to say thank you to our police for everything they do and our officers. They get paid for it or they do it on their own time, that is commendable. We have an excellent police department. And, um, gonna rock and roll tonight, but I also wanted to say, I know I'm going to beat a dead horse, but we need to start with warming shelters, because it's going to get hot fast. And a lot of people will die.
Cooling.
Cooling, cooling, we need cooling. So, thank you guys, I know that you all do excellent work, you all do hard work. And this community is a great community, and that's why we help homeless people who cannot help themselves. Thank you.
Thank you, Don Marie. Any other public comment? All right, we'll move on to item number eight, oh, actually, I'm sorry, number seven. Public comment, follow up, this is time for city council and city manager to respond to public comments and may direct staff to prepare a report or place an item on a future agenda item. Councilman Baker?
Thank you so much. So, uh, Mr. Ledbetter, um, I have just a few notes here. The graffiti on the blacksmith shop at Greenhorn. Can you look into that for us and see if there's anything that can be done about that?
Absolutely.
And then also, um, Ms. Gliotto, um, I don't know what's appropriate for our city attorney to look, you know, to look at, um, for public requests, I don't, I'm not understanding if there's a policy or not, so forgive me if I'm out of line. But I myself would like some clarification on SB 1186. To see exactly what a jurisdiction's responsibility is, it would be nice to have some input from our new city attorney. And then I would like to request that Mr. Mooney be placed on a, a future agenda to give us like a 30 minute presentation on cannabis. Thank you.
I don't know, it's a vote, I think it's a consent. Oh, yeah. Yeah, we can look into future agenda items, um, on that, Mr. Ledbetter, I don't know if it'll be the next meeting. Because I think we have a, a full agenda, so, um, yeah, we can look into maybe his presentation. And I know when he was up here, I got a call a day before and I already had a book scheduled to come to meet with him, so it was impossible getting 24 hours notice to meet with the gentleman and the representative from Doug Lamoff's office. So, um, but I did share my thoughts about marijuana and I shared with him that, just so the public knows, I shared with him that the fentanyl crisis and meth and heroin was a priority in my eyes than it is marijuana. And that we should have a speaker come and speak on those as well, because I think that is the killing of people is fentanyl at this time, not marijuana, that's my personal opinion. But I did share with them that, and I did get a newsletter from Doug Lamoff addressing the fentanyl overdoses and the fentanyl problem after I did speak to his representative about that. So he did, um, address it in a newsletter, that that is a serious, serious problem that we're not addressing as a community. And Chief Gilbert has spoke up here before with the problem and, um, ramping our city, so I would hopefully in the future, we can get somebody to come speak on that serious issue as well. So, and then also have Mr. or attorney, Jared, almost forgot his name. Get back to us regarding the legal question that Mrs. Gliotto had and will consult with him on that. All right. All right. Okay, Councilman Davis?
Yes.
You know, I sat and listened to the presentation and Gliotto has suggested and, and it's not one of these scare tactic things, it's very informative. And it would be well worth our time to have a listen.
Great. We'll look into that. Well, we'll look into placing it. All right.
Well, I'm going to be the only one in disagreement with my fellow council members. If we are going to have somebody come and speak to us, I will want to hear from somebody that we as a council choose independently and not somebody that somebody on the left or the right or the left center or the right center or whatever asks me to listen to, I'm going to go to somebody else, so I'm going to, I'm going to say no to that at this point in time. And I don't see it, part of my, my issue with it at this point in time is that, um, and I took some notes here, and I'm, I'm not going to spend a lot of time on it, but we're not talking about bringing marijuana to this city, that's not what we're talking about. We are talking about filling out a grant that allows us to make our own local law, local ordinances and control if it comes here. Now, we can just sit back and go, no, we don't want local control, let the state control us. But all I hear from people in this chamber is local control, local control, local control, if we want local control, then we need to take local control, this is not how we do it, thank you.
Thank you. And I guess, I don't, I, I'm unclear when a speaker like is requested, usually a speaker request, not a public person comes up and requests a speaker, is it usually a nonprofit or somebody like that, I don't, I've never had a, since I've been here two and a half years, I've never had somebody direct us to have a a speaker here, I've always been, it's always been requested to the mayor or request to speak here on something, so I don't know. Yeah, yeah, so protocol, I would like to talk to our attorney about that before I place him, because I haven't a public person's come up and directing us a speaker that she's had. And usually it's a nonprofit or an organization that's coming for us for a speaker, so I don't know what the protocol is on that, so we can ask the manager about that too, that's fine, I, I mean, you come up and speak about it.
So I, I would like some clarification on that, because it's my understanding that the public can come before us and request to have time on the agenda. So if we can get some clarification on that, I would appreciate that.
And that's what I ask for, Mr. Speaker.
Quick, because we have, actually have had other presenters that have done, has done presentations that were not affiliated with nonprofits and stuff like that.
I haven't seen it. Okay. So consent agenda, all items listed under the consent agenda are considered routine and non-controversial and will be enacted by one motion unless the member of the council wishes to remove an item for discussion, A, approval ratification of payments issued from May 8th, 2023 through May 28th, 2023. B, approval of minutes of the regular, regular meeting held May 16th, 2023. C, approval of minutes of the special joint meeting held May 25th, 2023. D, approval of minutes of the special meeting held May 31st, 2023. E, cash balances, budget to actual and fiscal performance reports for April 2023. F, quarterly treasures reports on investments, March 31st, 2023. G, continued urgency, number 864 fireworks, lead until June 8th, 2023, when ordinance 874 becomes effective. H, wait full text reading of all ordinance on the agenda. Ordinances shall be introduced and adopted by title only, the recommended city council action before you is the motion to adopt the consent agenda of the city council of the city of Wyrika as presented, is any member of the council wish to remove an item at this time? You're not removing an item, okay, what are the wishes of the council?
So moved, this is Councilman McCoy.
I have the motion by Councilman Pro Tim McCoy, do I have a second?
I'll second.
I have a second from Councilman Keg, I'll do roll call, Councilman Keg. Councilman Davis.
Hi.
Councilman Baker?
Yes.
Pro Tim, Councilman McCoy?
Hi.
And I, Mayor Middleton will be an I. All right, motion passes, five to zero. Okay, nine, new business, we have some patiently waiting guests out here. New business, city manager, agenda title, this is a Siskiyou cattle women's beef and brew special event, September 30th, 2023. Leanne Brown, on behalf of Siskiyou County cattle women, has submitted attached request for permission to have food vendors and information booths on Minor Street for the special event known as Beef and Brew. The event would take place on Saturday, September 20, or sorry, September 30th, 2023, from 5:00 PM to 10:00 PM, Mr. Ledbetter?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor and Warrica City Council members. This is Jason Ledbetter, the city manager from city Warrica. So Ms. Brown came to City Hall with her packet for an event, and she is looking at the opportunity to advertise this weekend at Gold Rush, because she feels there'll be a lot of folks in town for Gold Rush that would probably want to attend a beef and brew event on Minor Street. And so that is why we raced to get this item to you today, so that we can have hopefully some direction for Ms. Brown before this weekend's Gold Rush. And so ultimately, I know it's come up in the past as far as a policy is concerned, and we have a number of policies we certainly need to work on and bring back before the city council. But this similar to some of the other events, there is a request in here ultimately for a street closure and the use of a stage, I believe. And ultimately, there's a request for the city to waive those fees. And I, as the city manager, I am advocating with Ms. Brown here and the cattle women that we do that, because I do believe that the intent of an event like this is to bring people down to Minor Street. Possibly even when I think of Siskiyou County, I think of beer and I think of beef, folks, okay? And so I do think that this could be a fabulous event. This could be a McLeod mushroom event, in my opinion. This could be an annual event that happens at the end of September every single year. And if that's the case, we could have, maybe this could turn into more of a regional event. And I believe that it is up to you guys, it is the discretion of the city council on when those fees are waived. But I do truly believe that an event like this has a lot of opportunity, not only for our residents, but for those in the surrounding cities and possibly even those in Southern Oregon in the Redding area. And so now I'm going to ask Ms. Brown if you have a few minutes to come up and talk about, or Mrs. Brown, I'm sorry to jump to conclusions here, but.
Thank you very much. So it's Leanne Brown, and these are my cohorts in crime here. We have Cheryl Foster, Stacy Jackson is our president, and Amanda Patrick is on our committee. And we have Amanda Harris from Discover Siskiyou. And so we are planning to have a beef and brew, and we would like very much to have it on Minor Street. We did do a little one poster, and it helps to, it just is a visual to explain what it is. So we would be having tastes, people would purchase tickets. And with those tickets, they would be allowed to have taste of craft beers from around the region, small taste. They would also be able to get beef appetizers that some of the merchants around, could be anywhere, actually, it doesn't just have to be on minor, but would make, the cattle women would provide $200 worth of $200 for them to purchase beef. And then internally, we asked that they would make 300 appetizers to share with the participants that come in. We would also be having a beef dinner that the cattlemen would be helping us with. And we are going to have a band, and we have, Amanda will know about the band.
For this year, we have Chad Bush now coming in, which he was.
Come to a little closer, please. Thank you.
We'll have Chad Bush now this year for the beef and brew. He was here actually this weekend on rodeo. He's fantastic. I think, you know, the goal is to bring the county together, to have a good time, to enjoy the bounty that our county offers, and yeah.
We are also planning to have farm-to-table type vendors that people can peruse around and visit with. And those are like farmer's market type vendors or anybody that is using agriculture products to make something or to sell something. So it's kind of celebrating agriculture along with the beef industry. And
Do you have any questions about beef that maybe we can, or about our organization?
If I, if I could. I'm Stacy Jackson. I'm the Siskiyou County cattle women's president, and our team has worked really hard to put this, this together. Not only would it be a draw for the city, for tourism, for people to come in, but like Amanda just referenced, it would be a time to come together at the end of the harvest and celebrate what we have here. We're, one of our partners is Wonderland Distributing, and we're asking them to also bring in those local beers. So we're, we're looking at Mount Shasta Brewery, we're looking at Atna Brewery, maybe even Caldera from over the hill. But bringing in our local people, and when we say a sample, it's like a two-ounce taste of beer. It's not like mugs going down the street. We're not doing 99 bottles of beer on the wall. However, each, you know, our goal is 10 to 12 appetizer bites that everyone would also have the opportunity to try of beef. We are emulating this event after that beef and brew that takes place in Red Bluff. So the Tahima County cattle women put on the red bluff beef and brew. It will be on September 16th. Leanne and Cheryl and I actually have been the food judges for that for the past three, four, five years. So we've seen the number of people that have come in, we've seen the community come together, we've seen the, the beef promotion and also the promotion of their community. We've taken it a few steps further in that we are not, in that we are bringing in also the farm-to-table piece and a band. Well, they have a band down there, too, but our guys better. Anyway, we do, we do absolutely want to encourage our, our local farm-to-table people to come in and, and again, celebrate the harvest. That's what this is all about, celebrating Siskiyou County, getting people out there to have a good time. When we talk about beef appetizers, let me give you a culinary dream here. We've had everything from delicious hand-rolled meatballs to sliders, like Korean beef sliders. We've had prime ribs, sliced beef with pickled onion and year cheese. We've had all kinds of samples of wonderful beef that we've been presented, and we're hoping that we can, we can do that up here, too, and I know we can. We have some great culinary people in this community as well. So again, bring everybody together, celebrate the harvest, make it on historic Minor Street in Warrica, and have a wonderful time. So I really hope you'll consider this.
Thank you, Stacy.
I did go around Minor Street the other day and, and asked, talked to some of the merchants and asked them what they thought of it. And I did use my posters, so they had a visual on what we were trying to do. And these are signatures that
Thank you.
That they, they agreed to support that we hadn't even, it didn't commit them to anything. But some were interested in
All right, well, I will go to our audience first, actually, to see if they have any questions for Siskiyou cattle women up here in the event that they are requesting before us. Any questions for the cattle women from the audience? Come on up.
Oh, I'm sorry. I know it's a little mixed up, but I am public comment.
Okay.
So, good evening, council again. Amanda Harris, I am here representing Siskiyou Economic Development and Discover Siskiyou. So waiting until public comment to give our official support for this event. As Stacy did mention, they have been working incredibly hard at this. This has been an idea in the making for goodness, months now. And one of the first things that cattle women did is they actually approached Discover Siskiyou for assistance on this, which we were happy to help with as far as guiding them in the right direction. And I think that this is a fantastic opportunity specifically for Discover Siskiyou. Obviously, as you guys know with our work, we're here to help elevate events, we're here to drive tourism. That is the number one thing that, that we do. However, what we do also see is this great opportunity that as we start working with you as a council and working with downtown merchants and going through the processes, we understand that it can be a little bit onerous. And so we're actually looking at this opportunity as a way to also work with cattle women and create almost a guide. And it can be for other organizations. And our goal in that is to be able to not only drive tourism, but engage the community more and actually have events that really benefit everyone on all sides. So easier for the city, easier for the community, and hoping to bring more people together. And so we really, really do support this event and stand by it. We've also guided them in regards to even date selections. Obviously, we know it's not during the summer. There's a reason for that. Specifically with tourism, you know, we're also working on trying to drive tourism in those buffer months, which this is a really, really important time to do so. And I think that pretty much sums up that. I'm also happy, like I did say, Discover Siskiyou is helping guide the cattle women through this. And so if there are any other questions, I'd be happy to kind of put on ball packs as well.
Thank you, Amanda.
My question would be for you. It just popped in my head.
Just get closer to the his last, can you get closer to the mic? I'm sorry.
I was just wanting to make sure that it wasn't coinciding with the Montague Ballroom Fair.
Okay. Great. Thank you for the questions. Any other questions or comments before I go to council members? Okay, I'll close for public comment, and I'll go to our council members and go back to the side first. Councilman Davis? Questions for the cattle women? Questions for the cattle? Oh. No? Okay. For the event, okay. Councilman Baker?
Thank you, Mayor Middleton. I think that I've actually been called a buzzkill in the press. And so I was delighted to hear that basically it's my understanding that you guys will be offering like flights of beer that will be small taste. You're not selling big quantities of beer. People are not going to be swinging beer bottles down the street. So I, I'm happy to hear that. And it's, this is considered a private, I mean, a fundraising event for cattle women. And
Yeah, with someone from the, you come up and answer our questions, that'd be great.
Essentially, we would probably make some money on it. This first year, it's, it's not going to be a lot because of, because of our learning curve that we are doing here. Cheryl can answer the financial.
We're, we're trying to budget this, and there's a lot of unknowns yet. So we hope to make some money on this, but our main goal is to promote beef, because that is a big part of what we want dinner, beef to stay in the center of the plate. So yes, we hope to make some money. Right now, it's not going to be a whole lot, and I was reminded that I didn't have some things in my budget. So I'm, that's always a little scary when, you know, and, but we sell the margin, so we're still okay, but it's not going to be, you know, rolling lots of money.
Thank you.
The samples are adorable little cowboy boots that you can get two ounces of beer. So they're not going to be slinging
Thank you. So my next questions and comments are directed towards our city manager, because I'm I really am wanting some kind of policy or guidance. I understand waiving fees for city-sponsored events. And I certainly understand and see the benefit to Warrica, the Minor Street merchants. I see this as a win-win. But I am just, my concern is gift of public funds to a private organization for a fundraising event versus the city-sponsored event. And I would really like some direction from the city attorney on developing some kind of policy. I'm really not trying to be a buzzkill, but again, we're responsible for the city dollars. So I think this is really creative. And I just, my final question that I will ask is, will you be serving vegan beef as well as beef beef?
No.
Thank you. I appreciate you guys coming forward.
The Councilman Baker? Councilman Keg?
Couple things. Are you guys a nonprofit, 501(c)(3) or anything?
We are nonprofit. I don't, I don't know. But I think it works.
C4? Okay. Not all, okay, gotcha. I, looking, you know, at some of these things, and yeah, Ms. Baker definitely has a point on, we need policy, you know, procedure on some of these things. But moving forward, we got to look at, too, a lot of these events that we do that are sponsored by the city were new events, too. So we got to look at being creative and looking out, you know, looking outside the box of maybe this might be one of Warrica's signature events, too, down the road. So sponsoring and having the help of the city in this, in this instance, could be beneficial for the huge benefits for the city for future, you know, future events going down the road. Because like I said, Gold Rush Days and some of these other events were events that we tried out years and years ago and, and wasn't a city-sponsored event originally and worked into a city-sponsored event. So it might be something to this, it might be something creative. We also add another, other events that went bye-bye to Sizzling September, which was in the same timeframe that they're doing this. We used to have a car show and all that that went on, too, and that was, was on the edge of being a city-sponsored event, too, and was waived by the city, too. So these are the things, we just got to be creative and think outside the box and, and see, but we do need some type of policy and procedure on stuff like that. But I think we need to look at things going, hey, this could bring in some money for the city, one way or the other. And I'm definitely for, when it comes to our roots, and our roots was back in the day, was farming, ranching. I mean, that's why my great-grandparents came for, they were ranchers out in Little Shasta Valley, one of the first settlers. So I'm all for anything that deals with the real beef. And I wish you guys would have brought some samples, because I didn't, I didn't need any dinner.
We would have, but if we brought them for you at the beginning of the meeting, they'd be bad by now.
Oh, no, I would have got a hold of them.
We will have samples at Gold Rush, just to kind of.
Awesome. Thank you, guys. Appreciate it.
One comment to it, the, we've been trying to copy what Tahima has done there. And they had the luxury of partnering with the chamber on the, on the beer part. So, you know, they, they had a chamber, and so we're trying to do both. It makes it a little bigger lift for us to try to figure it out, but we'll be, I think, we'll be fine. But if there was a chamber, we would be trying to partner with them.
I can't have you speak, Ace, I can't have you speak from the audience, sorry. You're going to get me in trouble.
One option we could do, which we, we have other, this, this poster needs to be updated some, and we are going to have sponsors on there. So should the city of Warrica decide to waive these fees, it's very likely we can put you guys down as a sponsor if that is appropriate. Not because there's beer.
Yeah, probably not.
Okay, order, please, everybody. Everybody's having direct conversations. Okay. Councilman Keg, were you finished? Okay. Councilman McCoy?
So I'll tell you why I don't think it's appropriate, because I don't see that we sponsor any activities. And in the, in the five years I've been sitting on council, we don't sponsor any activities. We have had activities come to us to ask for money, because they don't have the money. We have chosen to give that money to them, but we don't say, oh, we're sponsoring this or we're sponsoring that. And I, and I can't recall, I mean, I don't, I know I'm seeing some frowns and stuff, but I can't, I can't, you know, if, if the city manager can tell me what activities we sponsor specifically, I'd like to know.
Maybe the definition of sponsor, I'm not understanding, but I sat in front of the last city council, and it was explained to me that the chamber contract that was coun- canceled, that ultimately there were three what people considered to be city events. And ultimately, the holiday parade would be a the holiday parade would be a prime example, in my opinion, of us not putting on that event, but of somebody else putting it on that is technically, my understanding is it's a city event. So I don't know.
So city event means it's sponsored because the chamber, I mean, we used to pay the chamber $64,000 a year, plus we paid their, then we paid their rent and we paid their, let's see what else we pay because it was more like 72, 74 that we paid their IT, all that stuff. I don't know if maybe that's, maybe that was, that's where I see a gift of funds. Really right there. I mean, that's where I see a true gift of funds and we got nothing out of it, quite frankly. I mean, it really fell apart in the end. So, I mean, I just don't see, I've never, when, when I was working over here at Jackson Street for 20 years, I never looked at the parade and said, oh, yeah, kids, you're going to be in the city sponsored parade. We were, we were just, the band was in the parade. We were in the holiday parade. So, I mean, I think we need to think, we need to look at that. And I must confess, although I've not had a relationship with any of these women in a professional sense, I have had a relationship with the late Pat Martin and Mrs. Dr. Cowley, and they worked with me for 20 years plus through the school system. And we took our kids out there and they came in and they, in different grades, they were in our, in our classrooms. And again, for, for me, from an agriculture family, not cattle, but you know, growing lettuce and tomatoes and things like that. It, I thought it was important for kids to know that you don't go to Burger King and that the burger is just there, or you don't go to Rayleigh's and, oh, I'm getting a chicken or I'm going to get a, you know, somewhere along the line, they got to stun them. They gotta, you know, they gotta cut them up. They gotta do all that stuff. So, so I'm sorry, go ahead. If you have something you want to add, can we, hold off? If you got something you want to add, go ahead.
Order.
I apologize for interrupting you.
That's okay, go ahead.
If you can take your phone back and not have conversations while he's speaking, thank you. Okay, go back.
So I, I just want to say that I'm, I'm okay with that. But if we're going to do that, then the other thing we need to look at is a tax dollar, whatever tax dollars we make off this, probably we should donate that back to Women for Beef because they're, they're doing some, they're doing a service for us and they're going to bring people in. And that's the only way. I mean, it's one of the big ways we're going to get people in here. We're going to get tax dollars off of it. I don't know. I, I just don't, I, I I think it's a win-win situation for us. And I, here's my number one concern. And this has never been addressed in the five years I've been on. I, I'm going to, I could only speak for probably Councilman K. But there were five of us at one point that were concerned about the stage. And we were concerned about upkeep for the stage and we were concerned that we cannot buy another stage for $80,000 or $90,000. We can't afford it. And at, at one point, the council, not this council, just you and I and three other council members talked about putting money away every year for a stage in a, in a, in a funding stream. And I don't know that that's ever happened. But that's what really concerns me is that we're not, and that stage isn't going to last. I mean, we may get 10 more years out of it and it's gone. But I mean, if we don't need the stage, if we're not going to loan it, we don't need it. It's a waste, waste of money. If we are going to loan it or if we're going to rent it, then if we're going to rent it, we should make money off of it. And then we're looking at it probably, I think we were talking about $1,500 to $2,500 per event. Well, again, people aren't going to pay that for that. They just, I think, expect that municipalities are going to take care of that. So again, that's a whole nother fish to fry. But again, for me, it would be figuring out how we're going to replace the stage when I'm off and you need to replace it in 10 years. I want to be able to, because I mean, it gets used so much. So I, I, I'm going to, I'm going to go on record as supporting the event.
Thank you, Councilman McCoy. I'll make this short and brief. I've had the privilege of knowing Stacy Jackson for a very, very, very long time. Since her kids were little and she's pregnant with her daughter. And so yeah, and I believe you're the cattle president, correct? Cattle woman president?
I am the current president of the organization this year, yes.
Yes. And she's been in ranching for a long time and I've seen her recipes on Facebook and seen her promote the cattle woman and the hard work she does along with her colleagues. And everybody is amazing because I've learned so much just following Stacy on, you know, I know she was a rancher and I know where we get our beef, but when you really get to know a rancher and what they do and they promote and they're, they have pride in it and the hard work they do and they promote, promote it in our county is I don't think some, I think sometimes or a lot of times is probably not appreciated and from our residents that are here that this is a majority of our culture and our being of, you know, history and way of life. And as far as policy, way I look at it, and maybe we set a policy or whatever, it's not set right now, but as Mr. Ledbetter has stated, that it's always been up to the discretion of what an organization does and what we do. Correct me if I'm wrong, you guys give scholarships? Just if you could just give like a couple of minute brief of what you do for the community, what you give back to our community that you should be recognized of, because I don't think a lot of people know what you give back to our citizens.
So the, the Siskiyou County cattle women have been around for, since the sixties. Since we're 70 years old. The, the initiating women that started this were called cowbells. And it was about educating people about beef. And we do go into classrooms and we have actual curriculum that we work with the teachers and provide to them in the classrooms in our communities to teach children about not just beef, but agriculture in general. Where does, what is wheat? How does, how's, how does wheat go from wheat to bread? I mean, from it looks like grass to now it's a biscuit on my table, right? So we really strive to educate the public about beef in particular. And all of the wonderful things that, that beef represents, because when you look at a, a steer or a cow on the side of the road, you don't realize that not only does that provide food, but also fiber and clothing, medicines and all those other byproducts of the beef animal that actually are ingrained in our society today. So insulin, those type of medications, you know, come from, from beef products. So with that in mind, our, our goal is to educate and promote beef in our community. We want to support our youth. We offer two different, well, three different kinds of scholarships in our community. We have, every year we give out scholarships to graduating high school seniors from our county high school. So Wairega High School, Etna High School and Butte Valley High School had recipients this year. Oh, and Dunsborough, Dunsborough High School. So, you know, $10,000 worth of scholarships went out this year. We also give a continuing scholarship to those youth who received a scholarship. If they continue with their education, we will again, give them a scholarship each year until they graduate. I should clarify. Yeah.
We send some every year they've gotten a scholarship.
Yeah. So I mean, not 10 years, but you know, five years is the max. So we do have a limit on that. And the other scholarship that we have and created in memory of Jenny Cook Ridwell is a scholarship for youth to attend leadership camps and agricultural events in other areas. For example, if some youth wanted to go to UC, I'm sorry, California State University at Chico for the, the beef field day, they can apply to our organization and we can help them get there. Or if they want to go to a leadership camp for 4H or for an FFA event, we use that Jenny Cook Ridwell Scholarship to help youth get places and, and learn and achieve and become contributing members of our, of our county. And of course, we all hope they'll come back and work here, right? But agriculture is our number one industry in this county. But we'd like to think it's something else, but it's, it's agriculture. Timber, alfalfa, strawberries, carrots, beef. It is the number one industry in this county. And when you think about the fact that 60% of the land in this county is owned by the state or federal government and that only 40% of our lands actually are part of that equation, it's a huge industry for us. Okay, I can't negate, I can't figure out the timber piece, but you know, because a lot of that timberland is, is government owned, but there are a lot of privately owned lands too for timber. Sierra Pacific Industries and, and a few, just to name one. Our goal is to not just reach out and tell people, oh, you need to eat beef. That's not our goal. Our goal is to let people know the benefits that we have, the sustainability that our ranches have, our interest in clean water, wildlife, reducing fire or land fuels and really getting out there and, and showing the, the nation and the world that we're here in a positive manner. And we are not doing anything that would hurt our animals in, in any way that, I mean, we go out of our way to, to keep our animals safe. We vaccinate them. We give, we give them treatment. Prime example, this one wild cow on Sunday decided to go through three fences down an embankment and sliced open her side. There was a 14 inch rip in her hide along her ribs that you could see. You know, and there's two options there, right? You call a vet and get her treated or you shoot her. Because you can't do that yourself. She, internal injuries. We call the vet. That's a lot of money for some crazy cow, right? But we, we love our cattle. We love our sheep. We love our goats. We love our land. And we're not doing anything to destroy it. We want it to be good. So that's what we do for our community. We want to share that word. Of course, we promote beef. We are ranchers and that's what we do. But we're also not going to run down the other agriculture in our community. We want to support it. Any other questions?
Thank you, Stacy. I just wanted you to kind of explain because I know you do scholarships and it's, this is a little bit more. I don't think people really realize what you guys do. And I've learned a lot from you just by watching you and your Facebook and promoting you, or promoting your, the cattle women. For me, when I came back here, all I heard was, you know, gosh, there's nothing to do here. There's no events, you know, revitalize minor street, get people down there. And I think this is a great idea. I think it's a shame on us if we don't, can't appropriate $1,500 and not let our stage be used. So it can rot in our city yard. And I think as a community, just like many communities, that's, I, I look at it as a community stage and not gallaging people for money, especially for people who give back to our community and scholarships and education. And so I applaud you for coming to us and I think it's a great idea and I thank you. And unless there's any other questions or comments you guys want to make, I will go to the floor for a vote. All right. Okay. I'll go back to council. The recommended city council action is the motion to adopt Resolution 23-26 of the city council of, I'm sorry, city council of the city of Wairega approving street closures and other requests to appropriate, appropriate $1,500 of city in-kind services for the Siskiyou County cattle women special event known as Beef and Brew. What are the wishes of the council?
Mr. Mayor, I believe we should sponsor that event and I move that we do.
All right. And I have a motion from Councilman Davis. And I have a second from Councilman K. I'll do roll call.
Call for question.
Oh.
Call for question, please.
Back off of the, sorry, I have to re, I asked for questions from Mr. McCoy. Andrew, is Andrew still on the line?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Mr. McCoy does have a question for you. Speaking.
Can we change the wording and vote on it tonight on, on a sponsor, calling it a sponsorship? Just asking.
All you'd be doing is calling it a sponsorship? No additional monies or anything like that?
I'm having a hard time hearing you, Andrew.
He asked if there was a, just adding sponsorship with no additional money.
You're just adding sponsorship to it?
I don't think, I think there's some confusion.
That was not part of my motion, Mr. McCoy. My motion was that I believe we should sponsor this event, so I moved.
Okay. So he just used the wrong wording, but that's what you're concerned about. I don't think he meant to say sponsorship. Okay. Never mind.
Sponsor is not a, not the wrong word, Mr. Mayor.
Well, no, it's just a difference.
Well, well, indeed, sponsor. Yeah, we're not sponsoring it. All we're doing is adopting it on, on action. That's, that's why I'm asking.
Okay.
That's why I'm asking the attorney. I'd like the attorney to.
Right. So he's just, so Andrew, Councilman Davis used what he just said, sponsorship, it raised a flag to Councilman McCoy, thinking we're sponsoring it, but it's not in the wording for sponsorship. So there was clarification regarding that, but I don't think that's what he meant. So I don't think we need to add a sponsorship to it, correct?
Just clarify what is.
I just asked. Can he clarify? Yeah.
I would say just have Mr. Davis clarify what his motion is. Would be the simplest.
Well, let me, let me go.
What I was saying is, what, when you sponsor something, it's anytime you put money into it or you invest into it in any manner, and we are going to close the city. And we're going to contribute unforeseen funds. So it's a sponsor. We are sponsoring this event. And so I move exactly what it says right here.
So you're moving what it says on that.
So if we're going to move.
I did not call. Order, order, order. Okay. So I'm just going to go back and ask the question. So we're not in this back and forth. So far, city attorney, do we have to add sponsorship or not? Is it okay as written? And Councilman Davis makes the motion as written. If you can answer that for us.
Right. So as I understood what Councilmember Davis was saying, it was in the colloquial sense of what a sponsorship is, not in a legal sense for a city to be a joint sponsor of an event where this city's logo would be used, city staff would be there and the city would ultimately be responsible for some portion of the event. So I understood the motion to mean that he was supportive of the, the event and that funds would be transferred as requested. Not that this becomes an official city event with this action.
Thank you.
Was that the meaning of the motion?
Yes, as written. It was just, yeah.
Yeah. The only reason, the only, this is Councilman McCoy. The only reason I'm asking is because we've been talking about sponsorship tonight, Visa B gift of public funds. Councilwoman Baker has brought up some very good points, as have Councilmen K. And so I just want to make sure that we're not using the word sponsorship. So that next year when we come back, we go, oh, we've, we've sponsored this. We're going to, we're going to sponsor this again. If we're making a motion, we're making a motion. I understand that if we're sponsoring a motion, sponsoring something, then we're sponsoring the event.
Again, I, I understood Councilmember Davis's comment or motion to mean to move the staff recommendation in a broad support of the event. Not as an official city sponsor per se. As for the gift of public funds, we should really be careful about throwing that around. I do not see that a gift of public funds here. And if as was requested, you would like me to provide a full analysis of what that old body of law means, I'd be happy to. I do not see that here. You've made a finding essentially that this is beneficial for the city. And with that, it is not a gift. It is for the benefit of the city and the city's interests. So I do not see a gift of public funds issue with this approval.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay. So I'm just going to go back and read the motion. So the recommended city council action is the motion to adopt Resolution 20-23-26 of the Wairega City Council of the city of Wairega approving street closures and other requests to appropriate, appropriate $1,500 of city in-kind services for the Siskiyou County cattle women special event known as Beef and Brew. Again, what are the wishes of the council? Do you stand by your motion? Okay. So I have the motion stands from Councilman Davis. And the second still. And the second still stands for Councilman Keg. I will go to roll call. Councilman Keg.
Hi.
Councilman David.
Hi.
Councilman Baker.
Yes.
Councilman McCoy.
Hi.
And I will be an I. Good luck. Congratulations and thank you guys for coming.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, ladies.
We look forward to it. I do. Yes, yes, for sure. This weekend, everybody Gold Rush Days. Drive safe, everybody. All right, so we now go to um, staff reports and city manager report, Mister Ledbetter.
Yeah, thank you, Mister Mayor and Wairika City Council, Jason Ledbetter, city manager, so um. Uh, met with Pacific Core yesterday in Portland with the Public Works Management Staff and our Water Attorney. Uh, Gwen Moore, more information to come uh in the future during closed session. Uh, the Fire Hall Design Project is gaining a lot of traction and we have an updated breakdown. On the proposed cost for design, which will be uh sharing with the council at a future meeting, so that's very exciting. The Home Key Project, which was referenced earlier this evening. Uh, we expect to bring back a resolution to be able to apply for that grant funding. Uh, that should be coming to you guys on six-twenty. The city received two bids back on the Public Safety Initiative and we hope to solidify one of those bids into a contract over the next few weeks. Uh, City Hall has two new hires of the fiscal tech position, Bill and Gail, and they are both onboarding at the moment, doing quite well. Uh, May nineteenth, I had lunch with Daryl Loz, the Regional Cal Fire Chief, and we discussed the upcoming fire season, green horn maintenance. Uh, and a lot of uh Cal Fire Grant Opportunities that the city will be approaching or taking on. And just a reminder, uh, we talked about it, so I believe everybody's aware, but Gold Rush Days is this coming weekend. Um, and then finally, I've had a lot of inquiries and I think I've talked to a number of folks here, but. It was referenced by Caltrans. Um, there are no cameras on the signals around town on Highway Three. Those are sensors. Uh, for traffic control. That is the way it's been explained to me, so thank you.
All right, thank you, Mister Ledbetter. Okay, so I'm gonna go to our uh council members' uh. Reports and. I'm changing it up tonight, so I'm gonna go to the side again.
Thank you, Mister Mayor. Mister Cake. Your presentation was excellent.
Thank you.
I really enjoyed it. A lot of information and you did a great job of getting it across. And Mister Mayor, I want to compliment you for allowing him to take a little more. Was predicted, but that was wonderful. Great job tonight.
Thank you, Mister Davis, Councilman Davis, Councilman Baker.
Thank you, uh, Councilman Keg. Um, I truly appreciate the passion that you have. For the homeless in our community and working towards um a solution to that. And I too appreciate uh all the work that you do on behalf of the city and your presentation tonight, so I just want to say thank you.
That's it?
That's it.
You guys are easy peasy over here tonight. Councilman Cake.
Couple things we're definitely looking forward to Gold Rush Days. That's gonna be a big one for the community. Like I spoke earlier, the a lot of these events, you know, got started years ago and. It's just somebody just coming to the council saying, hey, let's get this event going, so it's cool to see a new event going. We've had. Uh, sizzling September we used to do back in the day. There's a bunch of other events we used to do and. They've kind of gotten changed around and been moved and hopefully now we'll see some new events coming around and. This one, I like it just because it comes to what the heart of Siskiyou County is, you know, and it's. Started off Gold Rush. It started off with agriculture and the beef industry and then went to the logging industry and. My family is seeing all of that. My family came out here during the Gold Rush Days. And very beginning of it and went into um, out into Little Shasta and had a ranch and. What that and then my dad was a log truck driver, so I got to see all that, so it's neat to see um some events that uh center. And what the heart of Wairika is and heart of Siskiyou County is, so um. Other than that, um, I do have a C O C meeting tomorrow. It is going to be over at Human Services. Um, in regards to this presentation, I'll be talking a little bit about it, but this presentation, I'll be talking about. The point time count a little bit more too. Um, and we'll be going into some other details on stuff on our C O C also, so. Um, public is welcome to come. It is open. These are open meetings for the public. Bite them over, invite people to, like I said, bring ideas. I, we need. Um, more people being involved in homelessness and, you know, said. Earlier that, you know, a lot of people were throwing a lot of money out there. Um, the state is, the federal government is, yeah, they are throwing it and is it going to now where it should be? No, a lot of times it's not going where it should be, where a lot of things that we need to address are not getting addressed. One of the may big ones is mental, mental illness. Mental illness is not getting addressed back in the eighties. Um, the lot of the mental institutions or all the mental institutions got closed down during the Reagan administration. And I actually had a lady come into my showroom there on on Fairlane there. Uh, we we talked to her and she actually was a social worker back during the eighties. When all, when those mental institutions got shut down and there was thousands of individuals got displaced. When they shut down all these mental institutions, so there was thousands of people that were wandering the streets. They had no game plan when they shut down these mental institutions. So if you want to know where I feel the heart of or the 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 start of this homeless issue started back was back in the eighties. A lot of people argue with me and say it started earlier than that, but the heart of of a lot of this started back in the eighties. Here locally, a lot of that transpired. We lost um, a lot of our industry back in the eighties. And that started our problem and just went from there. When you got, when our number one industry got shut down, which was logging back in the day. Um, in the eighties, when that got shut down, that just uh was a trickle down effect where we are today, so. There's a lot of it to that. Um, getting back to one other thing. Um, and we launched the stage, Mister McCoy brought up that there was a lot of discussion. Um, back in the day on previous council, I should say, on the direction of the stage. We actually had the previous city manager. Want to get rid of the stage and we as a council said, no, we wanted to keep that stage. Because it is a community thing and it's what the community enjoys and being able to use that during these events. So I think this is something that we need to bring back um to the council as far as how do we. Own that out or how do we um classify that as who gets it, who gets it free and who doesn't? Um, because that's something that we started back on a previous council. We had that discussion and never ended up going in place. And that's something that we definitely need to bring back on discussion on what the guidelines need to be on that stage because. Mister McCoy made a very valid point, valid point that this is not a free stage. If we were to replace this thing, it would be very expensive. And our previous city manager actually wanted to sell it for like fifteen grand or something. And it's like, there's no way we could ever replace this thing and it's it's um, it's one of the things that we offer as a city. Just like our community center, the community theater, there's community things that we have and I feel that this is one of the things. That is valuable to our community, so we need to, we need to address what that means. So in other words, like Mister McCoy said. Is that something that we need to set aside some money now for the future to make sure that we it's properly maintained for that, so. Uh, I request that we bring that back and figure out what the direction is of the stage for the future on that, so. And as far as that, that's all I have. Thank you, Mister Mayor.
Great, thank you, Councilman Keg. For Tim Councilman, um, McCoy.
Mister Mayor, um, I'll try and keep it as brief as possible. I'm going to talk about Beacon. I'm going to talk about Beacon of Hope. I hope it doesn't offend anybody. I know in the past it has offended council members. Um, last week, uh, we painted a Beacon of Hope. We're going to put a second coat on the outside this week. I would encourage anybody that wants to come by and look at it. I'm not on the board. I don't get paid by them. I don't get anything from them. I'm just a grunt. I go out and help them, but we do have homeless people that work with us out there. We'll be out tomorrow morning at seven o'clock and we think we'll have the second. Coat of paint put on the outside probably by one o'clock and then we'll come back in a week or two and do all the, start doing the trim. Um, but it's it's coming along, but again, Beacon of Hope is being done all by donation. There are no grants, no grant money, so and again, I'm not gonna, if somebody wants to talk to me about it personally, I'll talk to them. I'm not going to talk about it. During city time, it wouldn't be appropriate to talk about those things. I um, want to thank Juliana and the five council members and the city manager for putting on a great meeting. Um, at the, at the planning meeting. I I saw some great comments, you know, I know some people want to. You know, they're all kind, their comments run the gamut, but you know, it was wonderful. We got some great feedback and it's and it's great for. The Communication Committee. It's very wonderful, so, you know. Oh, high school kids were, yeah, they were great, yeah. Uh, my last thing is aimed at uh Fire Chief uh. Lemus, Fire Chief Lemus, I didn't think was appropriate, but I brought it here, but I am going to bring it up to you. You know what I'm talking about. We are going to be celebrating June thirtieth, the tenth anniversary of the ground Granite Mountain Hot Shot Crew. They got surrounded in a fire in the Breskett Chino Valley over there and I think all but two succumbed in the fire and. There's a big monument going up over there. When I was there, I shared with them a Wairika Fire Department patch that is going in there. Uh, little museum that they have. They actually have a museum and a mall for them and they uh gave me a patch to give you and they also gave me. A sticker for the tenth anniversary as well, uh, which you may or may not choose to use as well as a challenge coin and um. I think we need to really think about our firefighters and I think we need to really um, thank them because we're, we're going into fire season. We are going to have a fire season. Drought's not over, it's not going to be over, but I mean, it's better, but um, you know, those, those, those guys gave the last full measure of devotion, the twelve of them. To save somebody else's property, so and so, you know, I'll I'll drop a bye and give it to you, okay? Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Councilman McCoy. All right. Chief, did you want to, chief? Are you sure? You can go now. You can go before me. Come on up. I'll wrap us up, so come on up and speak.
Your, your comments, I got to meet the individual that uh that survived. They had a fundraiser in Mount Shasta years ago and when the movie came out. Only the brave.
Yes.
Correct? Very good movie if you ever have a chance to see it, so anyway, Jerry Lemus, Square City Fire Chief. Uh, I was asked by city manager Jason Ledbetter to give you guys an update on uh fire weather and fire outlook for this year. Um, obviously, you'd have to be a hermit not to know that it was a very wet winter and we all were thankful for that. And as we go forward, even as we're, you know, here in the thunder and and seeing the lightning outside tonight, I mean, it's 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 very, it's a. Makes me sleep better, so, but we still have that potential for, you know, fire drain, lightning and. Um, going forward during the summer, we're going to have more of that, I would assume based on on what they're telling us, so. Uh, anyway, so very wet season uh for the winter. Um, not as wet as we weren't as wet here as some of the the places south of us, above normal precipice here. Um, and these are kind of written in in notes. I had to go to another meeting, so I had one of my captains fill in for me as I went to another meeting, so bear with me. Areas of Central Valley, they had the wettest winter on record, as you probably, some of you were aware. Uh, snow pack was two to three hundred percent above uh normal water content in a lot of, lot of locations and. What Big Bear had twenty and twenty-five feet of snow in places. That's just incredible, so um, for us here locally. Uh, May precip was above average. Drought's not expected to be significant this year. I mean, we're we're probably. Could be released off of that. I think this county board made a request to be um removed off the. Uh, list of the drought. All the reservoirs are full except for Trinity Lake, which is another story if you've been following that. Um, probably would have been full had they not, you know, emptied out so much. Um, field moistures are staying up but can change quickly as. Storms and air moisture, cooler temperatures diminish and we get into more uh more of the drier, continued drier weather. And then, of course, the winds is what is my, our main concern. Um, that looked for June near normal uh weather with maybe above average precip. Outlook July to September, low confidence, but um looks near normal, maybe above normal temperatures. And then, of course, lightning, like we've been experiencing lately, we're going to see, you know, more of that and it'll taper off as uh the summer goes on possibly, so. Um, and it said a lot of lightning later this week and then a day later, we're getting a lot of lightning. Uh, significant fire potential outlook, June below normal potential, July to September will be about average. Um, overall, people need to stay vigilant and this is was for a proud firefighters, Forest Service Cal Fire. As uh even an average year for us can cause significant fires, so. To kind of give you a synopsis, I think uh we're in good shape, much better than last year and the, and the previous year. But, you know, we're still, we're going to be doing things the same. We're going to be preparing as if it's, you know, going to be a. I think we're fine. Chief Gilman's honest. So anyway, um, so I'd be happy to answer any questions or concerns that you have, but basically we're, you know, we're in in uh normal mode. And looking forward to hopefully, I'm going to predict, don't hold me to this, I'm going to predict it's going to be a less than. Less than, less fire year than what we've been having, so just based on what we had, but the grass is growing, grasses are going to get fire. Probably be a later one like it normally is here, you know, September could be a bad year, a bad night, so. But uh, we'll have our pancake breakfast on Sunday. I don't know, they changed it a little bit, but um, it is Sunday and not Saturday, so keep that in mind for. If you run into people and want, never wondering why the pancake breakfast isn't Saturday, they put us on Sunday, so we'll be there ready to serve. Pancakes and now they talk, start talking about beef and got me all hungry.
And what time on Sunday is the breakfast?
Um, eight, eight to eleven.
Eight to eleven, so.
Yes, sir.
All right, great.
No, no, just this Sunday. It's graduation and weddings on Saturday. We're going to have enough people.
All right, thank you, chief. Chief Gilman, you're okay? You don't want to come and stalk us? No. You're two minutes, okay, great. All right, so I guess it's back to me, okay. Um, let's see, yeah, um, Community Theater, the uh Earth Community Center, where we have the uh. The event for the. Um, general plan and uh Dwayne and I sat at the same table and um, we had a couple of senior, I think they're seniors. And they were pretty quiet until I started probing with questions and once I started probing with questions of, you know, what they do um on the weekends and what their future is and. A young man was just uh talked about what he does of volunteering and it was such, um, you don't hear that of a. Eighteen-year-old talks about how he volunteers, he does roping, he wants to go away for um, a couple of years, but he wants to come back. And I think he's going to a trade school. He didn't mention which one, but he said he's going to a trade school in which there would be one here, so he wouldn't have to leave that C U S. Offered more trades. He didn't mention what he was be being, but he was a um bright individual. An asset to community. It was a breath of fresh air to talk to a younger person like that who was so um. Just engaged in the community because you don't see. You know, kids of that age and so they had a lot of great ideas and um. Um, and that's, you know, that this town, the twenty forty-four, that's their future, not mine at that time. You know, so they were speaking. Um, Sunday I went out to the um, uh, Holy Ghost Festival, Portuguese Pick, known as Portuguese Picknick. Asa and um, his whole family were there. They volunteer a lot of times, so. Thank you, Asa, for everything out there. You know, I know they're outside the city limits, but a lot of people attend that and it's a great event and uh. My grandparents um had a house right behind the hall for years. They lived there. I think over sixty years, I believe, and um at Knuckleloom property out there, so um, saw a lot of relatives. It was a great event. Um, June first kicked off our Pride Month, so I want to wish everybody in the L G B T Q plus. Community in our area and beyond a happy Pride Month, so um, that is community, you know, when people talk about um. Rights and freedom and everything, that's a definitely. They're under attack right now and um, people talk about freedoms and living your life and living your best life. You know, that's what they're doing and unfortunately, it's um, they're definitely being attacked, so I wish them well and um. Happy Pride Month and um, with that, uh, hope everybody comes out to Gold Rush Days and celebrates and supports our merchants and supports. Our promoters that are putting on the event this year and we hope it's going to be a good event. And with that, I'm going to wish you all a good evening and be safe and thank you for coming.